Okay, are we, are we recording? We're good. Okay, we are live. Okay, well, good evening, folks. Hello and welcome to the Humboldt-
Recording in progress.
To the October 26, 2023 special meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. I'm Noah Levy. As usual, I just want to direct your attention, if you are watching this remotely, to the start of our agenda, actually, the second page of the agenda, which has the information about how you can participate or watch remotely. You can always do so by phone. You also, if you are at a computer and watching, Zoom is the best way to participate in the meeting because then you're with us in real time. If you happen to be watching it on the humboldt. legstar.com website, which also has a live feed, just be advised that feed is 30 seconds or a minute behind real time, so if you are planning to call, you'll need to do so a little earlier than you might think you need to. I would now open the meeting and invite you to join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, could we please have a roll call of commissioners present?
Commissioner Scavdal-
Here.
Commissioner Levy-
Here.
Commissioner Landry-
Here.
Commissioner Mulder. Commissioner O'Neil-
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner West-
Here.
Okay, well, we have five present already. That is a quorum, and I am advised that Commissioner Mulder is en route but was delayed behind an accident, so he'll be here somewhat late, but hopefully not too late. Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications?
We have no modifications to the agenda.
Okay. We have, in fact, a very simple agenda tonight, which is just after we get through public comment on non-agenda items, we just have the one public hearing on the short-term rental draft, short-term rental ordinance. And so we have the full meeting to deal with that and hopefully have chance, not only for complete public comment, but also a full and robust discussion. I will now bring us to the public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for anybody either in the room or on Zoom or phone to comment on a matter that pertains to the Planning Commission's jurisdiction or the planning, the planning division's work, but that is not on our agenda tonight. Are there any members of the audience in person wishing to comment on matters not on the agenda? Are there any Zoom or phone attendees wishing to comment on a matter not on the agenda? Okay. Seeing no hands, I will close that section of public comment and now bring us to the public hearing on the short-term rental ordinance. And I will pass it to Mr. McNamara to introduce that.
Awesome, thank you. My name's Cade McNamara. I am going to be running through the short-term rentals draft ordinance tonight. First off, I would like to thank members of the public, owners, operators, housing advocates alike, for your participation up to this point. That is why we have such a strong draft. I would also like to thank Keenan Hilton for his hard work the past six-plus months and, and setting us up for success to be to this point. So now I'm going to go ahead and begin by running through the ordinance. Laura, if you wouldn't mind pulling it up for me. So on October 5, we held a workshop, and there was public comment and deliberation and considerations by you all. And on a basis of those comments, considerations and deliberations, we've prepared some alternatives and some text amendments that we're about to run through. So anything that is highlighted in yellow has been an addition. If there is a line strike through it, it is something that's been removed, and if it is something within a text box, it will be an alternative that you guys will be able to have time to deliberate over later in the meeting. Laura, do you mind scrolling down, please? All right, so the, the first alternative is, came, came about from a discussion on whether or not there should be a cap of ownership. So first, first off, I'm, I'm just going to kind of talk about cap because there are a few alternatives that we're going to run through before I speak to what's on the screen now. So on October 5, we talked about whether or not 2% of our housing stock being allocated to short-term rentals was an appropriate number. There seemed to be a general consensus among commissioners that 2% was an appropriate number because of the data presented showing that roughly 1.66% of housing stock is being allocated to short-term rentals currently. And then there was also a discussion of whether or not there should be a cap of 2% per planning area, and that'll be an alternative that is discussed. And then here we talk about, you know, a cap per ownership and how are we going to be able to trace who owns these short-term rentals and how to enforce the cap. And so for folks who are a part of an ownership entity such as an LLC or a corporation, a provision has been adding, saying that somebody who is a part of an ownership entity such as an LLC or corporation would have to provide an ownership roster, which essentially identifies all of the members of that entity. And then just below this, we have renamed what was originally a hall route to now be an access route. And then for existing operations, we will now be waiting to issue permits three months after the effective date. So after two months of the effective date of the ordinance, if the Board of Supervisors chooses to adopt it, that would be the effective date. So two months after that date, we would receive applications, and then three months after that date, we would then begin issuing permits. A provision's been also added, just as a clarification, that no permits will be issued on parcels where existing violations are identified or have not been remedied. This alternative identifies what I just spoke to. However, it, it highlights today as an effective date for a time forward or a time current, which would establish today as the date for identifying existing short-term rentals. And that would be today, October 26, for those listening. The way that this previously reads, or the way the draft currently reads, is that it would be from the date effective of the ordinance, should it reach adoption. Go ahead and continue, Laura. Keep going. We'll go down until there's a highlight. All right, right here. So this has been added just for clarification. So short-term rentals, you know, it says that they shall lapse after two years of the effective date, and people will just have to come in and submit a letter saying that they wish to continue to operate their short-term rentals. This also includes non-conforming approvals. So if you are approved and you're non-conforming, meaning you, you were approved via special permit, your approval would not have to go back through the process, you would merely have to submit a letter similar to anyone else. All right, thank you. So the quiet hours have changed for noise from 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. So now it has to be quiet from 10:00 PM till 8:00 AM. And, and then we've included home share in the parking provisions, just to specify that home shares must also reach the parking requirements. And then we've also included, there was a discussion of whether or not it's appropriate to be able to issue short-term rental permits to people who only wish to have short-term rentals for, say, a portion of the year. And so we've added a provision which allows people to operate a short-term rental for three months out of the year to cater to those who offer housing to students for the remainder of the year. And this would not be attributed to the cap, or counted, excuse me, counted against the cap. Go ahead and continue. All right, alternative owner-builder. And do you mind just scrolling up slightly to where the previous text is available? Just, yeah, right there. Thank you. And so, you know, the way that the draft is currently written, it prohibits alternative owner-builders from being, being able to operate short-term rentals. And the reason for this is because our alternative owner builders are able to utilize alternative building materials that, that don't necessarily meet the standard of a standard building permit or standard building provisions. And, and essentially, it allows for an owner to be able to take liability living in these structures because they're not, they don't have their final structural review by the building department. And so an owner is taking responsibility for being able to live in a home that they or they build or subcontract to build. And so an alternative has been added through public comment to remove this provision, which would in effect allow people to be able to utilize alternative owner builders as short-term rentals. And it should be noted that it would require a modification to the AOB ordinance, and the reason for this is because if somebody's going to live in a structure, in a, in a home that hasn't been structurally reviewed by the building department, they have to sign a release of liability, and that has to be reviewed by the chief building official. And so in essence, if somebody were to, say, have a long-term rental for AOB, a tenant could then sign a release of liability and be able to rent that long-term. But if we're talking short-term rentals, that would require every tenant of that short-term rental to sign and submit a release of liability to the chief building official. And, and that could create essentially an inequitable workload, not only for the chief building official in reviewing all of these letters, but also for operators to try and have, you know, people staying at their rentals, you know, have to sign a release of liability. It could create questions, and it could create, create a larger paperwork burden for that operator. And so we just want to identify that and let you know that if that is a decision that you all make, that modifications to this ordinance would have to, would have to occur. Go ahead and continue.
Chair, can we pause for roll call?
Sure. We can do that right now to reflect Commissioner Mulder's appearance.
Commissioner Mulder-
Present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Right there. Do you mind scrolling up just to the top, Laura? Right there. All right, so as I previously talked about with relationship to the cap, there was a discussion that 2% was an appropriate cap. And then there was a discussion of an alternative of 2% being divided per planning area. And the reason for this was because, you know, some planning areas may have a higher number of short-term rentals. And so this was added to try and protect the integrity of those neighborhoods at that same 2%. And, and so you guys have an opportunity to select that if you so wish. Going on to transferability, the way that the draft currently reads is that short-term rental permits are non-transferable. We've added two alternatives to address comments and deliberations. One would be transferability to next-of-kin or to children, and the second would be blanket transferability. The, that short-term rentals could be transferred from one entity to another without additional restrictions, but if they are, say, an LLC or corporation, that they submit their ownership roster as previously discussed. Go ahead and continue. Thank you, right there. So there's also the cap provision of allowing five short-term rentals per person, or five short-term rentals as identified per parcel. So that, that just means that, you know, one person or one entity, right, can't have more than five short-term rentals. And there's been two alternatives. One would be removing the per-person limit altogether, and the other would be allowing the commission to select a number that they find equitable to the public for a per-person limit. And then just below this, we added a provision just highlighting that no violations, no, no permit will be issued to anybody who has an active violation. And just to clarify to members of the public, if you do have a violation on your property and you have remedied, remedied it, that means that you no longer have a violation, and so you'd be eligible to submit an application. The, the point here is to try and, and encourage people who, who, you know, have remedied their violations or who are playing by the rules. So just want to make that clear. Right there. Private gatherings or parties. So the way that the draft currently reads is that gatherings and parties shall have no more than 20 attendees. An alternative has been written, which just allows for no more than twice of what that stay cap is. So say if you're allowed to have, say, five people stay at your short-term rental, or that's what you've identified in your application, twice that number would mean that, you know, 10 people can come to your gathering. And so that's been an alternative that has been added. It should be noted that we did receive a number of comments, actually from owner-operators, identifying their concern with 20 as a number, or even double as a number. And that's because violations or complaints are, you know, complaint-based, and those typically come from gatherings, parties, social, you know, social gatherings. And so really, for them to try and protect their short-term rentals and, and respect their neighbors, there were some comments submitted saying that this number was too high. And so I just wanted to identify that to the commission before moving forward. Laura? Again, we see here that the quiet hours have been changed from 10 to 6, to now 10 to 8. So no early birds. And that is the summary of changes that have been added. And so I'll go ahead and conclude unless Director Ford has anything to add.
Thank you so much, Mr. McNamara. Just for those of you, just so everybody's clear, our intention is basically to go to public comment now, then bring it back to the commission, and we will go basically line by line or section by section. But if, if there's any questions that anyone has right now for Cade that might clarify what, or to try to clarify anything that, that wasn't clear from the presentation, that would be appropriate now.
I'm just thinking of the legal probate nightmare that you might have if someone was to pass on who was a partial owner and they left it to whoever their heirs are, and they probate it, and then what happens, you know, to that person's legal right to own a piece of that house that's being used as a short-term rental? I can think of all kinds of problems, and so I don't know how we solve those problems, but in this same, well, maybe I already have five, but I inherited my mom's house, and what happens now? Does it get taken out of the housing stock for short-term rentals? Have we thought about that?
We, we have, and the intent is, first, let me state the intent, and secondly, the implications for the property. Number one, the intent is to make sure that residential structures don't get permanently converted to a commercial use. This is really intended to be, you know, a limited duration, a shorter-term use, and for a period of time, and it's not forever. And so that's why the, the transferability was put in there. Second is that, you know, property is being conveyed, so we're not affecting the actual property, and that can be conveyed to an heir.
But if there, there's still a surviving owner, does that, and I inherit a part of it, does that affect their ability to continue with their license to, or permit to operate?
I would say the, it depends on what the ownership is. If the ownership's an LLC and the, there is still a surviving member of that LLC that's operating it, then that LLC would in all likelihood continue to exist. But if for whatever reason the LLC were to be changed, then the intent is that the unit be converted back to a residence, or go through the permit process again.
Okay.
Other questions at this time for, yes, Commissioner Muller?
Just clarifying, this is the beginning of the hearing, so this is where we're supposed to do ex parte of different things that we went to, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just ex parte, I attended a workshop in Garberville, I also attended an in-person workshop in McKinleville, and I listened to part of one. Where was it? I, I didn't participate, but I just kind of listened, and then I lost service, so just wanted that to be out there.
Great, no, thanks for that reminder. I also, on that note, will just, will mention that I attended a, an in-person workshop a couple months ago in South Eureka, and also one in McKinleville that you referenced. And just this morning, I sat in on and listened to a one-hour Zoom webinar put on by a planner on the East Coast, not, nothing to do with this ordinance, but talking about general issues and best practices for short-term rental ordinances in general.
Just to keep the ex parte going, I, like my fellow commissioners, I didn't attend any of the meetings, but I watched the meetings that were available online. But more than that, I've been talking to a lot of the community members about the ordinance, and have been hearing a lot of feedback about protecting housing and concerns over, yeah, short-term rentals.
I attended a meeting also in McKinleville, and I own ADU, and it is not a short-term rental, so just FYI.
I also attended the McKinleville meeting and sat in on the webinar that you mentioned today.
Yeah. Okay. I just had one question for Mr. McNamara before, I guess we get to public comment. And that is, you've gone through the inland version of this ordinance, there's also a coastal version. I noticed that it's like a page longer, maybe not a full page longer, but I didn't have a chance to track down what the differences are. Can you just give us an overview of any differences, if, if any, between the two?
So the, the page difference is just because zoning difference, zoning designations in the coastal zone are slightly different, and so you may see those reflected as attachments below the ordinance. As the ordinance is written for both inland and coastal, they are effectively the same, except one is going to be within our coastal chapter, and one is going to be within our inland chapter. And I think that it's really important to note that regardless of recommendation tonight, and regardless of adoption by the Board of Supervisors, it will still require its certification by the Coastal Commission before it becomes effective, meaning that if you are an operator of a short-term rental within the coastal zone, you will want to wait until certification before you apply for a permit.
Okay.
I have one other question. What's the legal definition of next-of-kin? Because that was in the recommendation.
I'm sure case law and probate has a definition within like the California state codes, I don't know it off the top of my head.
That's what we would follow, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I guess then, if there's no other immediate questions, we'll, we'll go to public comment. Now, I would just like to get an idea of how many people think they wish to comment, because if the number is not too large, we would allow the, the usual three minutes of comment. Beyond a certain number, however, that, that would become, might become impractical. So could I just get, you're not bound to it, but anyone who is in the audience and thinks you'd like to make comment, could you raise your hand? Great. And anyone in Zoom, there's already three hands waved, but if anyone else on Zoom is thinking you may wish to comment on this, that would be helpful to see your hand raised now. Okay, you know, on, altogether, that's not, that's not as big a number as I expected it might be. And so I think we will go ahead and allow three minutes of public comment from each commenter. Did you have something you want?
Just a clarification of procedure. When I follow the Board of Supervisors meeting, they always do the Zoom comments first and then in-person, and then a lot of times we do in-person and then Zoom. I don't know that we have a technical procedure that, I've heard arguments both ways. Some people feel that it may be more appropriate for the people that take the time to be in the room to have the last chance to make the comments, but I don't have enough position either way, just want to make sure we're consistent.
Okay, yeah, I've been, I've been generally doing in-person first. I'm happy to, I'm not attached to that. If, if the commission thinks it would be better to do it the other way around, we could do it the other way around, at least for today. Any thoughts? Do you have a strong preference?
My only thought is if you do the Zoom, we're going to have the commenters that are in right now, and then the people in the room have the chance to-
To hear them.
You know, hear them-
Okay.
And give their three minutes. And then it's not a chance for like, all of a sudden, 20 more commenters, you know, if they aren't tuned in right now.
Yeah, okay.
To gauge them on a public comment.
That, that might be helpful, so let's, let's do it that way. Let's, let's open, let's go to the Zoom comments, Zoom and phone commenters first, and then you good folks in the audience will come up right after that. So then with that, I will recognize the first caller, 3370. You are the first hand raised, you have three minutes. If you can unmute by pressing star six, please.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great, good evening, my name is Lael Bata, and I'm a policy and research analyst with Better Neighbors, a coalition of hosts, tenants, housing advocates, and community members. At Better Neighbors, we conduct data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry in the coastal zone and its impact on the coastal community. Today, I'm here to urge the Humboldt County Planning Commission to amend the proposed ordinance to permit only true home sharing within Humboldt County's coastal zone. A hosted-only policy is the best way to balance the preservation of affordable housing and coastal public access within the coastal zone. However, should the Planning Commission decide not to adopt regulations limited to true home sharing, we request that the Planning Commission lower the cap of short-term rentals to 1% of the housing stock. Permit a single individual or business to own one parcel with a short-term rental permit, and prohibit short-term rentals from operating within a multifamily structure. Like many counties throughout California, Humboldt is facing a housing affordability crisis. According to the National Low Income Housing Coalition, the fair market rent for a two-bedroom in Humboldt County is two times what it'd be considered affordable at 30% of the area median income. Humboldt County residents are facing burdensome housing costs right now. In the city of Los Angeles, we have seen firsthand how short-term rentals have contributed to rising housing costs. According to a McGill University report published last year, short-term rentals have contributed to an increase in rents by $810 and have taken 2,250 homes off the long-term market since 2015. Meanwhile, in Humboldt County, rents have increased $250 since 2015, with the number of unhosted short-term rentals increased, increasing 25% since 2022 alone in the coastal zone. According to the October 5 staff report, in the coastal zone, 225 unhosted short-term rentals currently occupy housing stocks that may otherwise be available to long-term tenants or potential homeowners. A policy limited to true home sharing is a step towards preserving existing housing stocks for long-term use and public coastal access. Furthermore, the Coastal Commission has passed strong and balanced short-term regulations. Most recently, they approved the City of Hafman Bay regulation that included a primary residence requirement on both hosted and unhosted short-term rentals, along with a 60-night cap on the number of nights an unhosted rental may be rented annually. As another coastal jurisdiction, Humboldt County has the opportunity to preserve access to housing for residents and maintain coastal public access through home share, true home sharing. For these reasons, Better Neighbors urges the Commission to pursue a hosted-only policy and if not, reduce the cap to 1% of the housing stock, limit one parcel per individual or business, and restrict short-term rentals for operating in multifamily structures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your very well-timed comment. Okay, the next hand I see raised on Zoom is Adam and Ray. Go ahead and unmute, and you have three minutes. Can we unmute them? It still shows mute on my computer. Now it's not. Adam and Ray, can you, can you say something?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thanks so much.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. I have some data that was, should have been in your packet that was turned in before. I'd like to bring up some data from our regional housing needs allocation. As you know, that's a mandate from the state and how many homes are needed for the area. I support an ordinance that only allows for home shares for, for short-term rentals and would eliminate 61.05.01 short-term rentals defined as entire homes without a caretaker or resident. In doing so, this would open up hundreds, if not thousands, of homes up to first-time home buyers and long-term renters in our community who currently need homes or are seeking upward home mobility. When compared to these RENA allocations alone, the number of short-term rentals in our county represent a significant portion of our housing stock that is being lost to commercial ventures. Based on our current RENA allocations, 3,390 new homes are needed. And the current number of STRs in our county are equivalent to 26% of our RENA needs. I also support an additional, in addition into the draft STR that would prohibit short-term rentals in multifamily structures. As we continue to grow as a community, we should safeguard our multifamily structures from being overtaken by any potential short-term rental transformation. Again, I do support limiting our short-term rentals to one individual or business as opposed to five. If the Commission chooses to take a write-in number tonight, only, I would support only one short-term rental permit for, for that addition. But additional provisions should be included for family trusts and benefactors to ensure that multiple licenses cannot be obtained and ultimately have the same benefactor. Additionally, I would support a 1% cap for short-term rentals in our community. This would be an overall reduction to what is stated in the draft ordinance, but it would be a measure to protect our housing stock, which is currently partially under threat from being transformed into short-term rentals. Again, I urge the Commission to consider only allowing home-share rentals in the short-term ordinance. This is one of the largest measures that we can do to ensure that housing stock is protected for our community. This would allow our, our short-term rental owners to still be able to supplement their income, but it would preserve the principal use of homes as.
10 seconds, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comment. Okay, we'll go then to the next caller on Zoom. That's Trevor Goff. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you can. Looks, oh. Okay, yeah, Trevor Goff, you should be unmuted. Can you say something?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
All right. Yeah, good, good evening here. My, my name is Trevor Goff and I live in the Jacoby Creek Valley with my family. The whole Jacoby Creek Valley is on septic systems. As a homeowner and as a professional civil engineer, I'm very concerned and disappointed that the county's short-term rental ordinance, as drafted, will approve short-term rentals beyond the design capacity of septic systems. As drafted, this will place our property at unnecessary risk from untreated sewage being discharged onto our property from uphill neighbors. This is a public health issue and a hazard. The staff report has stated that any septic provisions would cause delay in permits being issued and an increase in staff time. I have submitted in written comments, an example from Sonoma County, which puts the bedroom in septic verification part onto the applicant. So the applicant would go look up the county records, gather that information and sign that the bedrooms match their design capacity for their septic systems. And there's also provisions for older undocumented systems. Please consider requirements similar to that of Sonoma County for properties with septic systems. As an example, a house with a septic system designed for two bedrooms would have a max of five people as drafted. However, you know, maybe unknowingly to property owners, they could think they have additional bedrooms or place beds in other rooms, like a den or dining room. In this example, each additional bedroom would allow for two more occupants, you know, greatly exceeding the design capacity of their septic systems and putting neighboring parcels as well as, you know, for those properties along Jacoby Creek, you know, the environment at unnecessary risk. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your comment. Okay, the next Zoom caller is Chris. You should be unmuted, at least on our end. If you could go ahead and try to speak and confirm that we can hear you. Chris on Zoom, are you able to be heard? Okay, Chris, it's not working, but we'll come back to you if you want to try again. I'd like to get your comment. I'm going to go now to the next Zoom commenter, which is Neil Cleveland. If you could go ahead and unmute and test your mic.
You now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Again, my name's Neil Cleveland. I'm an owner of an existing STR in the inland portion of Hennecks. I've attended all the meetings, most of them, I believe, and with the workshops and with the planning commissioners. I believe that Director Ford and Planner Keenan Hilton and Kate McNamara, the planner now, have been clear, concise. I've also had sent seven letters to them with comments, many comments, and discussion. I really don't think it's necessary to repeat all the points and authorities or things I discussed, but they're all in writing. I just want to thank you for allowing public comment and being part of this process. And I look forward to becoming one of the new STR owners in the new ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll now go to the next Zoom hand, which is Chip Tittman. If you could go ahead and unmute and make sure we can hear you, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Oh, thanks for being there. I want to appreciate the Commission for taking time for public comment. Short-term rentals are a lifeline for the small rural VRBO and Airbnb operators, particularly in the South County. They are an, an economic engine for tourism and a pathway beyond the dying cannabis economy. Please don't over-regulate the rural short-term rental operators, forcing them out of business and increasing the economic slide in rural and Southern Humboldt. Currently, there's an abundance of housing stock in rural Humboldt as the cannabis industry has dissolved. Yes, the situations in the urban areas need to have special consideration, but please consider the Southern Humboldt as a unique and situation. Please let the rural permit process be simple, self-registration, but without building codes or road restrictions. Yes, collect the bed tax, require the business license, have operators sign noise, light and parking agreements. Yes, the Good Neighbor Agreement as currently proposed for immediate neighbors within 500 feet is sensible, yes. The Farm Stay Program as currently proposed in the ordinance is very good as it encourages non-cannabis farming, permaculture education and tourism, yes. That's all the county has to do. Let the rural short-term rental market regulate itself as it has been for five, six years. This will save the county money in inspections while still gaining permit fees and allowing for oversight. If egregious operators or problems arise, the county can authorize code enforcement to shut them down if they're credible and substantive complaints. Similarly, stricter regulations can be enacted if needed in the future. In rural areas and parcels in excess of 20 acres, one or two short-term rentals could be principally approved with an over-the-counter, one-page application to operate a short-term rental, while agreeing to self-certify and submit Good Neighbor Agreement, Health and Safety Agreement and annual reports to be submitted to the Planning Department. This could allow the unpermitted grandfather homes to qualify for the economic benefits of short-term rentals, particularly in the Southern Humboldt area. Thanks for letting me to provide input and I look forward to hearing how the rest of the meeting goes. And once again, thanks to Mr. Ford and Mr. Levy for chairing the meeting. And I appreciate you guys letting the public comment. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Okay, Chris on Zoom, you haven't put your hand back up. Did you wish to try to comment again? And, okay. Adam and Ray, it is two names there, so I suppose if there's a different person who wishes to comment, we can allow that. And I'll just say one last chance for anyone else who's on Zoom now or phone. Please raise your hand if you're wishing to comment and then, otherwise, we're going to close the Zoom comment shortly. Adam and Ray, were you raising your hand as a different person?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I thought so. Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
All right, this is Adam. I just wanted to say that the gentleman speaker before me made a lot of very reasonable points, particularly for the rural areas of the county that are having economic issues as well as facing shrinking populations. I think it's actually really good to try to funnel some of our tourism to these areas and especially in the form of lodging. However, in the areas around the coastal zones and Humboldt Bay, we really need to do everything we can to get some of these places back into use as homes. In pretty much every other instance, if a hotel is going to be established in a neighborhood or in a community, there's an entire permitting process, there's an entire public input process. And to the point we're at now, there are so many in operation and there has not been any public input process on it until now. And, you know, every single day that a new, either entire home or entire apartment opens up as an STR, we're essentially getting farther from meeting the RENA numbers that the state laid out for us. The intention was to make more homes and basically we are battling a tide of homes being converted into hotels and motels. And we just really need to be cognizant of how ridiculously expensive it is for people to live and, and continue to live in this community. In so many other places that have become burgeoning tourism centers, the people of the community get pushed farther and farther out and have to commute in to serve the tourists. And I think it's really important that those of us who live here and make these communities our homes and create the flavor of the community are the people that actually live in the community. And I think that'll, I'll end my comment with that.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Thank all you Zoom commenters. The last Zoom hand that's raised is Chris, who tried before. So he's going to be the last person that we take on Zoom. Chris, go ahead, you have three minutes. Well, that hand just went down. Oh, you did?
Yeah. No, he's unmuted.
He's unmuted, but he's just not able to, okay. All right, well, we, we tried. Thanks to all the Zoom commenters, I'm now going to close public comment for Zoom and phone and turn to the audience in the chambers. I saw a number of hands raised earlier, so if you would start to approach the podium, and you can have three minutes as well.
All right, thank you for, Commission, for letting me comment. My name is Seth Naaman and I'm a longtime resident of Humboldt County. I'm also a short-term rental operator. Short-term rentals are often vilified for displacing long-term renters. However, as noted, they make up about 1.6% of the housing stock. There's also been some assumptions made on these, on the calls and various commenters before that if these, if this 1.6 or the 2% wasn't short-term rentals, that they would be available to buy. However, that's really just an assumption and any operator could turn it into, you know, a medium-term rental for nurses or something like that. So it's not really correct to say that if these weren't short-term rentals, that they would be available as housing for our community. During the summer tourist season, there's significant demand for short-term stays in Humboldt County. I would like the Planning Commission and others to also be aware of lobbying by the hotel industry to essentially continue to vilify and, and create hysteria over the contribution of short-term rentals to a lack of housing. It's been noted throughout the United States that the hotel industry is, is doing this. A quick, I did a quick search for the Holiday Inn by the airport before I came here today. And if you want to stay at the Holiday Inn for one room next summer on a weekend in August, that's going to cost you $304 for one night for one room. And the, like it or not, we are, we are a tourist area. We have a national park 30 minutes away and people want to come here and they don't want to stay in a hotel room. They want to stay, have a more organic experience at a short-term stay and they're often much cheaper per room than you can get at a hotel room. You know, the, the hotel industry concentrates revenue. A lot of us short-term rental operators, we live here, we're in the community, we spend our money here, raise our kids here, and the income that's generated from the short-term rentals really, you know, help, is, is part of how we, how we get by. So I guess in closing here, I know I'm running out of time, but I would urge, you know, the Commission to keep the five parcel maximum and not limit the cap to any less than 2% of the current housing stock. And thank you for letting me comment.
Thank you. If others in the audience who wish to comment could maybe start to stand up just so we can move through, or start to stand up at least before the next person is done. Yes, sir, you're, you're next, go ahead.
Yeah, my name's Bruce McCampbell. I also am a short-term rental operator. I'd just like to object to the non-transfer clause. We spent a lot of time and effort in building up a business. We try to get those, those reviews higher, so it's an improvement to the property. We treat it like a business. You, in fact, are requiring a business. You, in fact, are requiring a business license, so you recognize it as a business. And for, for the ordinance to say that we can't transfer is, you're not letting us benefit from the fruits of our labor. And so I just think that's, that's, that's why we do it, you know? That's why you're in business, is to try to make a profit. So that's, and also, one other comment, too, is if we have well-maintained, well-managed properties with no complaints, so why would you want to exchange that for an unknown quantity if we transfer the property? Thank you.
Thank you. Next commenter.
Hi, my name is Danielle Ferguson, and I live in West Haven on just shy of five acres with my husband, and we've been there for about 22 years. We have owned a design-build-construction company for that time, and recently, when my husband was diagnosed with Parkinson's, we realized he can't be building anymore, and we had to pivot. We turned our kid's treehouse and my guest house slash design studio into vacation rentals. We have two vacation rentals where we live. And it seems that people like us who live and manage, greet every person, we should fall more under the home share clause. Just because I don't share a toilet doesn't mean that I'm not on property, on premise, overseeing all of the people who come and go from my property. They're in my yard, and I wouldn't want a long-term tenant. They're not long-term tenant properties. I don't even have a kitchen in one of them, you know, because it's a treehouse. So, you know, to, to limit the owner operators on their primary residence to only one, as if we are just like an investor, seems a bit short-sighted and unfair to people like us who are trying to maintain our status within our communities. And the other thing is not being able to pass that permit down. My husband and I, you know, we will die, and our kids will live in our home. They want to be in Trinidad. They will not be able to afford to buy a house in Trinidad like we have, you know? They will want ours, and to maintain that, they will have to maintain the rentals and the properties that we have built up over all of these years. And for them to lose that opportunity seems pretty unjust. The other comment I wanted to make is the, the 2%, you know, the alternative four for whether or not it is 2% for the entire county or in your different neighborhood regions. Some places just, you know, can hold more vacation rentals than others. If I lived in Little Pond in McKinleyville, I probably wouldn't want a 2% of my neighborhood to be a vacation rental. I'm on five acres, I have no neighbors, my, all of them are people, park on our property, you know? It's a good thing for our little neighborhood. My cleaner is an out-of-work cannabis biologist. She makes between $30 and $70 an hour cleaning my vacation rentals. She walks through the woods. So, you know, these are not low-paying jobs that we're creating. We're creating a good living wage for people who need work in Humboldt County. Trinidad, West Haven, we're on big parcels, most of us. If we can continue to maintain our properties and not have complaints, then people who are, have existing vacation rentals should be able to get them permitted regardless of what these new rules are. That's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I want to thank each and everyone who's commented for respecting the time limit. All of you have done that. Next gentleman, go ahead.
I'm Carl Ferguson, Danny's husband, and I had a couple comments. The first two people who spoke on, about housing, I've got a really major concern about that because I think there's, the numbers they're using aren't exactly accurate. I think if you look at, there seems to be this assumption that if it's a vacation rental, that was also an opportunity to be a long-term housing. And I think that's not even true at all. It's not even close to true. Not exact, not just the treehouse, but our studio, and many, many other people have them. Like, for example, there's a lot of wealthy people in Trinidad area that have a home that they only visit two or three times a year. The rest of the year, it would just be vacant. It doesn't help anybody out. They can't be long-term rentals because they're their second homes. But when they turn them into vacation rentals, that helps our community, that helps bring money into our community, and it's a good thing. So that, I think that if any unit can be shown not to be long-term housing, then it shouldn't count against the cap. Because, well, you just can't assume that everything that's, that's long-term housing automatically is long-term rental, so it shouldn't go against the cap if that's a possibility. And I think there's many, 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 probably more than half of them, probably not even, are units that never would have been long-term rentals to begin with. So I think it's a major consideration that should be used.
Thank you. Okay, next commenter.
Hi, my name's Ann Preston, and I'm not really up on this, but everything I've been listening to shows me you're dealing with a whole lot of different things here. I only know two other people who have, I don't know if you call it home share, but we rent out parts of our houses that are kind of separate. And two of us live on West End, one lives in, in Fieldbrook, I think on Essex. And our concern is, you know, we're, we're using the money for, to supplement social security so we can pay the mortgage, and, you know, it's kind of a, an experience for people who stay in places like ours. Plus, we're far enough away from the actual urban centers, even though we're in the Bay District, that it's really more rural. I'm on 20 acres. Minimum where I am is two and a half to five. And so I, the gentleman who is speaking about Southern Humboldt, I'd like to be able to see us with the same sort of restrictions or sort of less restrictions in terms of roads and that sort of thing. That's really all I have to say, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others in the room wishing to comment? Great. Come on up, because we are going to close public comment soon, once we get through a couple more.
My name is Maureen Chase, and I'm a long-term rental operator and a short-term rental operator. And my question is, if your objective is to increase housing stock in Humboldt County, I, I feel like you might be barking up the wrong tree by trying to pick on 1.6% of the housing stock and limiting some of that. That's not going to make much of a difference. I feel, in my experience, the real reason for our housing shortage is the interest rates are super high right now. So a lot of local people, like, you'd be stupid to think about moving right now, because if you sold your place and you've got a 2% or 3% interest rate, you'd have to buy something at 8%. So a lot of people are hanging on to their places. I also think another thing that is, that has decreased our housing stock is during the pandemic, there was a great rush to buy houses up here. A lot, my good friend, who's a real estate agent, says that, you know, folks came up here, sold their places in the Bay Area and LA for three, four times what houses cost up here. Offered over $100,000 over asking price, gobbled up a lot of the market, so there's not a lot left. As a long-term rental operator, I, like I say, I question the housing shortage thing because I've noticed as we put our properties out on the market, less and less interest, we've had to decrease our, our prices. We used to get hundreds of applicants. These days, like, five, 10. So, so I, I just don't, I just question the efficacy of limiting these in order to increase housing stock. I know that Cal Poly and their increased enrollment was a big impetus to increase housing stock, but they predicted 2,000 more students this year. They only got 100 more as a result of their, their drive to increase housing. The Craftsman Mall has been developed, that's going to increase, that's going to provide 924 new beds. The whole Gateway Project is going to add 500 housing units to Arcata. So that alone is going to increase housing stock, decrease prices. So I just think it just, you know, the cost of limiting STRs is going to cost the county a lot of money, and you're in decreased taxes. The tourist dollars that come into this county, you know, people buying things, going out to restaurants, all the local jobs that we create, that, the cleaners, the landscapers.
10 seconds.
Oh, it's money to local economy, let alone our amazing livelihood and our pleasure in doing what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room who has not yet commented wishing to do so before we close public comment? Okay, seeing none, then I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. And if I can just quickly say, speaking for myself, many of the people who spoke tonight in person and on Zoom and at the last, at the workshop, have submitted really good letters that have really helped develop our thinking about this. I think the staff, as well as the commission, has benefited a lot, so thank you so much for your thoughtful input. There's a, it's a lot to try to balance, and we're doing our best. Okay, I think at this point, then, yes, Commissioner Mulder.
The one thing I'd like to add to all the comments I've read and heard, doesn't matter what side of the opinion it's on, there's a lot of heart and a lot of passion behind it. So I think that's what is going to make this very interesting as we deliberate, because there's a lot of heart behind it.
Well said, well said. Okay, I, I was thinking we would go back to Cade and start our discussion, go section by section for a bit before we take a break. Are you guys okay with that? Do another half an hour or so, and then we'll, then we'll break. Okay, well, as discussed before, we're going to now turn it back over to Mr. McNamara. And one thing I just thought I should put out, though, because I discussed this briefly with Director Ford before the meeting started, which is that, obviously, there are a number of places already identified in this draft where there's an alternative, either what's in the text, or an alternative, maybe more than one alternative. Indeed, we, we might even come up with some other things that we want to change. And if it's not clear that there's a consensus, then what, what was advised, what I was advised to do is to ask for, when we've had a discussion of an alternative, we would need a motion and a second to approve one or the other alternative. I think we can skip that if it's, if it's very clear that there's consensus on one alternative, but that way, we're, our votes will be formally on the record. Yes, Commissioner Scavdel. Oh, sorry, who? Oh, okay, did you?
Go ahead.
Yeah, just before we jump into this, there's been a lot of discussion about the overall lack of housing here in Humboldt County and housing availability, and a lot of, a lot of concern about that, which I also share. And, you know, we don't have many tools in our toolkit, so it seems like people are grabbing on to this. Short-term rental regulation is perhaps one opportunity to solve that problem. Personally, I think it's not, and we're actually working on the wrong end of the equation, which is, frankly, we're not building houses in Humboldt County right now, which is the problem. And thanks to some of the planning staff, I did get some research on single-family new buildings in Humboldt County over the last 39 years. And some of that data shows that the last 10-year average, we're building about 115 single-family dwellings a year, so about 0.33% of the housing stock a year. That's less than half of the average that we built over the last 39 years, so we're building fewer homes. The peak 10-year period was 1% or adding 353 houses a year. And actually, the peak year was in 1990, where we added 445 houses or 1.3% of the housing stock in one year. And interestingly enough, interest rates in 1990 were 10.13%. So interest rates weren't actually impacting the lack of new housing, at least in 1990. So at some point, I think we need to turn our attention to what's causing, what's the difficulty? Why is it so hard, or why are we not building new homes in Humboldt County? Because ultimately, this is a supply and demand issue, and if we want to have more affordable homes, more available housing for people in Humboldt, we need more houses.
Very well put. Commissioner West.
So I have a question for you, and then I'd like to continue the discussion that Commissioner Scavdel began.
Okay.
So my quick clarification for you is the, so when we go through the alternatives, if it's not clear that there's agreement, we are making a motion, right? That's, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's, that's what I think we, we need to do as a procedural point. Yes.
Okay.
But I just wanted to say, you know, we actually have more time than I thought we might at this point in the meeting. We are going to let Mr. McNamara walk us through this, and that'll be the chance to get into particular lines and sections and alternatives. But if others, you know, want to take this opportunity right now to kind of comment on what, what we've heard so far, the big picture, as Commissioner Scavdel just did, I think that's, that would be appropriate and quite possibly helpful.
I think where we'll all be coming from tonight is, I don't necessarily agree that this is not a tool in the toolbox when it comes to housing. While I don't think it's a solution to our housing struggles, it does impact our housing availability, and we ought to have some sideboards on converting housing into businesses.
Others wanting to comment at this point? Sure, Commissioner Mulder.
So one comment I've heard from a lot of people is, you know, housing stock, affordable housing, all these different kinds of things. And a lot of people are asking, why don't we have a regulation for long-term rentals even, too, with the noise? And, you know, we have a lot of code already. I've heard of incidences where, you know, we talk about affordable housing, there's laws of how many percent you can raise your rent every, every year and every month, and how many times a year, but yet there's still landlords out there demanding, you know, 10% raise or get out, you know? So that still happens, and I want to, as we're talking tonight, I want to remember that this is a piece of it, but it's not going to, just if we heavily regulate one end, doesn't mean another end that's already regulated isn't providing the needs through the appropriate regulations as it is. So I just, I want to keep an open mind in that aspect.
Commissioner O'Neil.
I'm all for supporting our local community or people who want to live in our community to have a source of income on their property, whether it's in their house with a home share or units on the property. I think they should be able to do that, because it is expensive to live. It's expensive to pay your taxes. Insurance in California is going sky-high if you can even get it. In some of our rural areas where you have fire issues or flood issues, it's even higher and you can't even get it. It's not cheap to build a house. Houses cost over 450 to 500,000 dollars to build a three-bedroom house anymore, and that's why people aren't building them. You know, they, a one-bedroom ADU can cost you $400,000 to build nowadays, you know, with all of what you have to do. So following all the regulations, and, and that's why we're not building as many homes. So, but I don't want to take away income from people who need it to survive. What I don't like to see and what I'm hearing is outside investors, you know, buying up property and turning them into short-term rentals, or even expensive long-term rentals that, you know, are pricing people out of living in Humboldt County, or having to radically change their lifestyle so that they can't have a single-family home, they have to rent a bedroom, and, or they're facing, you know, homelessness because they can't afford rent anymore. It's ridiculous. If you don't already have a home, good luck getting one, even if you're, you know, if you're a school teacher or work for a service district, you can't even afford a house anymore. So I don't want to discourage people who live in their home or live on their property or say, you know, you have to share your existing home, you can't rent out one or two things. I like the comment from Danielle in West Haven. If you have more than one unit on there and you have a large parcel, so be it, if that's what it's going to take to pay your bills or to supplement your social security. People can't even afford to retire anymore who've worked their whole life because they can't pay their taxes and their insurance and their food bill. So I don't want to take income away from people or take away from, you know, our, our economy on short-term rentals. I don't want to encourage out-of-town buyers to scoop up our property. want to encourage out-of-town buyers to scoop up our property sight unseen and turn them into, you know, drive up the price of, of our homes. I don't think that, I agree with, with some of your comments. I'm in the short, I'm in the low-income industry, or have been for most of my life. I don't think that all of these homes are going on the market. I mean, there might be a few that have to sell because they can't afford the taxes and the insurance on them, because they can't turn them into short-term rentals. But a lot of those people are just gonna not, they're not gonna sell them, or they're, you know, they're, they might sell them to a family member or whatever. But it's not gonna solve the problem that, that we have. But we have a big problem. And, yeah, we need to look at, as a county, how are we gonna solve that problem when a three-bedroom house rents for 25, 2600, or costs, a house that used to be a $120,000 house is now a $450,000 or $500,000. It's ridiculous, you know? Like, my home is worth way more than I would ever have been able to afford, you know, to buy it four years ago. So, we do have problems that we need to solve. I don't think we're gonna solve them on the backs of 2% of the people in the, in the county. But anything that we can do to discourage out-of-town investors from buying up property and jacking up the cost of housing overall, is, is something that I, I would like to encourage.
Thank you. Commissioner Landry?
I heard a lot of testimony, and, and I, I felt it. I, I believe there are a lot of other dynamics. Commissioner Scavdell talked about some of the dynamics that, that influence our, our housing stock. I appreciated some of the testimony that was talking about what are some of those other issues as well, besides blaming short-term rentals for the sole cause of this. So, I heard that. I also know that when I moved away during the pandemic for one year to Sonoma County, I didn't have a problem finding a rental. To come back home to a community that I'm born and raised in, and it took me nearly three months to find a rental that I was overqualified for. And I don't think it's any secret across the world, certainly within our nation, that diminishing housing and rising short-term rentals is a phenomenon that is happening, too. So, I can't ignore that. And, so I just wanted to say those things. And I'm concerned about our community, and I agree that there are lots of dynamics that are impacting our, our housing stock that has been shared tonight. And I don't believe that this is necessarily a silver bullet, but I do believe it's a step in the right direction to, as Commissioner West said, to have some sideboards on this industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you, yeah, Commissioner Mulder?
Just a couple more things I wanted to add back, listening to fellow commissioners speak tonight, and going back to one thing that really stuck in my mind, and it actually came from going to Garberville and then McKinleyville, kind of hearing the same thing, is what I heard from a lot of people, and kind of what Commissioner O'Neill was saying as well, is what can we do to avoid turning this into a commodity, where people are buying these up and trading them, kind of like the triple Rs for the cannabis thing, where it became a commodity? And people are priced out of being able to buy up a triple R and start up a farm or something like that. And, but also, providing the ability for people to live on a piece of property and rent out a couple of outbuildings or housing, you know, type things for people to come and experience Humboldt County, and then also provide some income, so those people can stay on the property and maintain that property that isn't getting the complaints, that, you know, the, the testimony I heard, people were, their neighbors didn't even know what they were doing. Honestly, that, that was a lot of the testimony I heard. So, I feel that's kind of the balancing act, that I feel we have to move forward with this ordinance, and I look forward to going through it.
Okay, great. Well, yeah, thank you all for a really good, setting the table, I guess, for this discussion. It is getting close to, well, 7:15. Maybe this is a good moment to actually have a 10-minute break. So, why don't we go ahead and do that now? And let's reconvene at 7:25, please. All right. Are we recording again? Okay, then I'll call us back into session. I will now turn it over to you, Mr. McNamara. But I, I did just wanted to say, and this, of course, goes for Director Ford, going through it section by section seems like the best way to focus on what we, what we can, you know, can do here tonight. But if, if there are issues that have occurred to you, from the comments you heard tonight, from other members of the public you've been speaking with, that are not maybe reflected in this draft, you know, the commission certainly can bring those up. But you also, as staff, I would encourage you to call those out, if that seems like it could be appropriate.
There are a couple of policy issues, based upon the comments that you've received tonight, that you may want to consider.
Okay.
First, I'm gonna go to the Ferguson's, and I've seen pictures of their two rentals. Extraordinary. The, the treehouse, I'm, I'm not sure how we would permit that. While I would love to stay there, you know, from a personal standpoint, how does that get permitted? And I'm sure, knowing who they are, that it's fantastic and safe and all that. But there, there, there's a struggle there, in all honesty. The, the other unit probably, especially something without a kitchen, can, you know, there's, there's probably some fussing around the edges that we could do to make those work a little bit better. And then, related, but perhaps a slightly separate issue, and this is a policy issue, is whether or not a home stay could be expanded, or whether or not something slightly different could be done for people who are living on the property and renting out a second unit. The, the rationale for including a second, a second unit on the property that's wholly rented out, is that that is a potential dwelling unit. So, this is kind of one of those moments where it's splitting the issues. There's two issues that we've been addressing. One is neighborhood character, protecting the, the neighborhood, and secondarily, then, is, is protecting housing stock. So, on the one hand, arguably even a second unit on the property, with the owner-operator living there, that would probably have very similar circumstances to the home stay, where the owner's living on the property, and so they're monitoring and mitigating what's going on. On the other hand, it, it is a unit, and, and that's why it was identified separately and counted, would be accounted according to the cap. So, that, that's something you may want to ruminate on a little bit. That is the rationale of why it's structured the way it is right now. But I, I do understand the comments that have been made, subject to allowing people who live on the property to be able to get income from the property, and differentiating that from, from other types of, of rentals that may occur.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, and I'm, I'm glad you called that out. It did raise a couple of issues. There is a line, it is near the bottom of page six, in, yeah, this is the most recent revision, the per parcel limit. That is something that we had a discussion of on October 5th, about, I believe it was Commissioner Scavdell brought up, you know, just this very point. If it is a parcel with a residence that is, you know, the operator is residing on, would we consider making that more than one? And that's not an alternative that was reflected in the revision, but I do think it's, it's something we want to have a discussion of.
Right. And that's why I just brought it up now, because it...
But since you bring up this other point about the, the treehouses, and I remember at least one letter, maybe a couple of letters, that, that spoke to this kind of issue before. Is there a solution? Is there a way that something which would not be a permitted residence in, under the building code, but, but could be a charming and attractive, you know, overnight vacation rental, and people have been doing that here and elsewhere for many years, is there some way that, either within this ordinance or outside of the ordinance, that that could be allowed for?
So, it's, it's, sometimes it's really about risk management. And when the county says that, okay, you have a permit to do that, you have an entitlement to do that, you know, if something were to happen there, and we knowingly issued a permit to something that wasn't permitted, according to an accepted standard, Uniform Building Code, then there could be some liability there.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Isn't that called glamping? And don't they, like, you know, make that sound like, you know, live in a treehouse, or they have a tent? Or what if you, what if you allowed an RV to overnight park on your property? Because they actually have apps where you can find these properties, like a farm or something, that you can pull in? And would that fall under this, or is that exempt?
That's, that's different. Glamping is something that we know we need to deal with.
But it was not covered by this?
But it's not covered by this.
So, you could continue to do that?
Yes.
Or you could allow people to rent your driveway to park their RV in, or on your property?
Well, I, I don't really know that that's actually a permitted use. I mean, I'm sure people do it. But, I mean, to be renting it out for RV parking, that is a form of transient occupancy as well. That's really not conducive to residential agricultural kind of settings, because there are other implications there.
I just wondered if it was included in here, or if it's just a gray area that...
It's, it's something we need to tackle as part of a separate ordinance, and part of the thing that we see coming from the state, is the state's beginning to regulate that as well. And so, we, we need to get out in front of that.
Commissioner Mulder?
Kind of the same line as Commissioner O'Neill. If there's any way we could allow treehouses, if they are allowed to use a tent site next to it, and the treehouse is, you know, if we can get creative, the treehouse is, I, I don't know what the right wording would be, but without creating too much liability to the county, because I do understand that aspect. But, I mean, there is something quite intriguing about trees. I mean, as a kid, I, you know, played in many a stump, so there is some intrigue there. It'd be nice to be able to share that with people that aren't able to share, share that in their community.
I'm sympathetic to that, but that, that really is a, a risk kind of management issue.
Hypothetical, somebody had a unique building that was created in experience, and it'd be back to where we're at right now, if there isn't complaints. This, this would, it's a complaint-based ordinance, if it does go through, from my understanding. So, it'd kind of be one of those things where you gotta take it at your own risk.
Well, in fairness, the county has, with very few exceptions, taken a complaint-based approach to all enforcement. County staff does not drive around looking for violations.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, with that, I guess I'll hand it back to you, Mr. McNamara. Obviously, I'm hopeful that, that we can get through everything we want to discuss in the next two hours. But, you know, commissioners, it's, I know that many of you have thoughts about provisions that may not have an alternative marked in the revision, so just raise your hand and jump in as need be. But with that, why don't you take us through it?
Laura, could we share a screen, please?
All right. So, before we go through the alternatives, there have been some tax amendments. And so, those amendments are going to be what's highlighted in yellow. If those tax amendments are all right with the commission, it's recommended that that be included in a motion separate from the alternatives for the resolution.
You want to do that first?
Well, why don't we just, just start at the top and work through it section by section, rather than going back and forth, up and down?
Okay.
So, I mean, really, the first point, and nothing was really done by the commission relative to purpose applicability, allowed zones, or application previously, but it'd be good to know if there are any second thoughts or comments on, on that at this, this time.
Anybody have thoughts on those first few sections of page one?
I'm personally good with all of page one, and including alternative one.
I'd just note that 60.05.2 applicability, these provisions apply when dwelling units are used as short-term rentals. Treehouses aren't dwelling units.
Well put. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else before alternative one, then maybe that's where we should begin the discussion.
All right.
And you already outlined it. I mean, maybe, maybe you don't need to explain it again.
The intent of that is to determine how many units you own, right? Because if you're in an LLC, that would count as one.
It would be a, a way for the county to be able to track and enforce the provisions of a cap. Yes.
I'm good with it.
All right.
And, and that would appear right where you have it, as, as little I one, or under C.
Yes, it would be a subset of C.
Mm-hmm, okay. And that's, that'll apply to everybody, everything under the ordinance falls under that, yeah.
Yes.
Well, I, I like it. Does anybody else feel differently about this, or wish that it could be said differently, or something? Well, then, if not, why don't we have a motion and a vote on accepting this alternative?
I so move that we are good with the language on page one, and accept alternative one.
Commissioner Mulder moves.
I'll second that.
Commissioner West seconds. Can we just have a voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so that unanimously approve alternative one on page one. Well, we're not quite through page one. But, yep.
All right. Next, we have access route has replaced hall route. So, this is going to be the, you know, everybody will be noticed along this shared roadway, if it's a private roadway. So, that is what a, an access route is.
Could probably just do all those changes at one time.
All right. And then, for existing operations, three months after the effective date of this ordinance, permits will be issued. This means that for two months, we'll receive applications, and then on month three, we would then issue permits. There's been a clarification sentence added to the end, saying that a permit shall not be issued if a violation exists on a property.
I have a question. So, what if by chance you get more applications than you intended to want to permit? How do you prioritize them? Is it first come, first served?
So, the way we've written it is that we're going to take them all in, and if they all comply, they're all gonna get approved. And if they exceed the cap, then the cap succeeded, we won't accept any applications for new STRs until such a time as enough rollout that there's then space below the cap again.
The only issue I would have is that someone might apply just because they want to get in that initial approval, but they don't really use it. And is there any kind of enforcement on that? Like, like I want to make sure I get in there, so I'm going to apply for one, but I'm not really planning on renting it out right now. Do they have to be renting within a certain amount of time?
Well, they have to demonstrate that they have been renting it out at a certain point in time, and that's one of the policy decisions tonight. Do we choose like tonight as a date? Do we choose the effective date of the ordinance?
But what if I just want to be a new applicant and I didn't rent one before? It, it doesn't work for me?
No.
So you're just opening it up for existing people?
To begin with, yes. So the, the idea here is that if there are existing operators and there are a number, number of operators that would exceed the cap, that we give them the opportunity to come in, get permitted first.
Okay.
So we're trying to basically do no harm here.
And you're going to make them prove that they're an existing owner by submitting their income tax return or what's going to be there?
Prefer not to see their income tax return, but you know, there, there may be things where if they've got advertising dating before a certain date that they were advertising it as a short-term rental, if they can show their tax receipts that they've paid taxes on it, or, or some kind of documentation that demonstrates that they were operating it as a short-term rental before the date.
And when would these new people who have never operated before, but want to get in before the, say they come in, there's less than the 2% and they want to get in, you know, and get permitted?
Then that opens up after the two-month period, and then it will be first come, first served.
And then how would you enforce that they're actually renting after the fact and not just hanging on to a permit? Is there any, does it matter or do they have to prove anything?
It's extremely difficult to enforce that because, I mean, if we were to put it, something in there that you have to have it rented out a certain amount of the time. If there's not the market there for that, then we're penalizing people for there not being the market there. There could be people that want to do that and hang on to it. If the commission desires, we can include language that once you receive a permit, you, you must continue to operate it as a short-term rental. But we really thought that that would be extremely difficult to enforce.
How expensive is it to get this permit?
It'll probably be $150 to $200.
So if I just wanted to tie up permits because I didn't believe in short-term rentals, I could just go get a bunch of people to apply and not use them?
I suppose if somebody wanted to do that, they could.
All right.
I, I want to clarify one other thing too related to the comments before. Obviously, the home shares are not affected by the cap. People in the more rural parts of the county are not affected by the cap. So I, I just want to make that real, real clear.
And now you've added later on, those who rent for less than three months of the year would also not count towards the cap.
Right.
I, I want to jump in here because there is, well, first of all, I don't think we need a motion on access route. Can we just all like, it's, that's just, that's not a substantive change, it's just a change of terminology, but you know, you've called it out. If we're all good with it, let's just move on. The, the rest of this then is essentially getting to alternative two because it pertains to replacing existing operations. But in addition to what is already highlighted as, as the alternative language to do with the start date, I just want to quickly touch on the matter of evidence. And we did have a discussion last time about what might be evidence, including tax receipts, but not limited to that. You've, you've left that undefined here, and I, I think maybe that's for a reason, which is that you don't want to tie your hands by specifying it must be this and that doesn't, you know, meet that standard. Do you have anything you want to offer on that point?
I think that's part of the struggle. We don't completely know what good evidence will be available because this is the first entree into this, and if we say only this and this, there may be other things that are there.
Commissioner West.
I'm not entirely sure where this fits in our discussion, so we can put it in a parking lot if it's not here. But I am still thinking about taxes, and I still strongly believe in the future operations that you shouldn't be able to operate a short-term rental without being in good standing with your taxes with the county and I, with, with your, your TOT, with, with respect to your short-term rental. I don't think you should be able to hold an active permit, especially if we're going to have a cap if you are not following all the rules. So where would we address that?
Well, it could be addressed right here. And it sounds like, if I'm hearing you correctly, that one of the thoughts that you're having is that you shouldn't be able to get a permit for an existing STR unless you can demonstrate you've been paying TOT taxes. And then secondarily, as it moves forward, you, the renewal is dependent upon you paying taxes, but I, if that's not explicit, that's expected because that, that is a component of the requirements of this ordinance.
I think if it were to come down to, I think for me, it's mostly the renewal at this point. If we're, if we're going to grandfather everybody in, it seems silly to include the taxes then, but yeah, I think as a part of the renewal, it certainly makes sense.
But I think when they come in for a renewal, they should have evidence that they've been paying TOT tax because that shows that they are operating. Because if I and all my neighbors don't want any of these things in my neighborhood, it's only going to cost me $150 to apply for a permit to keep everybody out from, you know, because you're going to hit the cap and you're not going to be able to get any more in there. So I just go get for 150 bucks, a bunch of us on the street, go apply and never rent them out, so.
So I, I know this is a later discussion, but just to finish that thought, it sounds like one of the things you're saying is that if the short-term rental has not been operated during the year as evidenced by payment of taxes, then it doesn't get renewed.
Right.
Yeah. That was the discussion we had last time. Commissioner West.
I, I do think we would benefit from it, when you were saying that if it's not written, it, it, it will be enforced, I do think we would benefit from putting it in to, to that folks know that it's an expectation and they can't claim that it was not an expectation.
Now, are you referring to the, that you'll have to show evidence of taxes paid when you renew?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Sure. Commissioner Mulder.
So just a reminder, we had this discussion in the last workshop that technically, operation could be one day. So I just want to make sure that we're all, I see nodding heads, so as long as we're in agreement of that is the definition of operation, because that would be the definition that they could get existing under, we just had consistency, so I want, I, I'm okay with that, but I just want to make sure we...
Yeah. I mean, it, it's a good point because I don't know that that, correct me if I'm wrong, Director Ford, but I don't know that that change was added.
That was not added.
Okay. I think if nobody disagrees, in the absence of any better standard being proposed, then I think let's, let's go with that. One, you know, a minimum of one day per year operation. Is that what we were talking, or?
Could, could I say just evidence by payment of taxes so that we're not encouraging people to do what Commissioner O'Neil has, is concerned that they're going to do, and then they go and rent it out for one day and pay taxes for one day?
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I just don't want to encourage that.
So we're not going to say one day explicitly?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Sure. Okay. But if you're all good with that, that seems okay, and I, I get the benefit of maybe not making that too explicit. The one other just small point that I just wanted to not forget that Commissioner O'Neil raised is that I do think it may be good to clarify somewhere when those who are not existing operators can start to apply, since, you know, she, she's pointing out that it, it says when you can apply. And, and if that's, if that's too obvious that it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, you just told me that, but you know, but since we're sitting, you know, existing operators can apply within the first two months, it, it almost begs the question, well, what about everybody else? So.
You know, when, when we wrote that, it was kind of my thought that people would recognize that for the first two months, we're reserving that for existing operators to submit their applications. And I think the three months is an extremely good change because that then gives time to review those and, and issue those. I, I think it really, it really sets the expectation for people, or it should, that if you're a new operator, certainly you can apply. Or why don't we just propose and add a sentence in there that says, "Applications for new short-term rentals will not be received until 61 days after the effective date of the ordinance." And, and then that makes it extremely clear.
I would clarify it.
61 days would be two months and one day, but we're proposing three months? Am I understanding of that correctly?
We're, we're proposing that we would only take applications for existing for the first two months, and then it gives us a month to take action on those. But after that 60-day period or two-month period has closed, then we would start receiving applications for new.
Can you process all of those in one month?
So, and I know there's criticism about this, but we've really tried to make this what would normally be an over-the-counter kind of permit issuance. So if the applications come in, they're complete, there's not a significant amount of review to these.
What about the up-to-code kind of issues like we heard about septic system?
Well, that's a different policy issue, and that may be something that you want us to look at, and I would be interested in seeing some, Noma's count, Sonoma counties to see if it's a self-certified...
Did you give them a provisional approval and then maybe there would be issues that you had to continue to explore?
I would not want to do that because that just gets into things then where you've got compliance and you're trying to claw back an entitlement that you've given somebody. And, and so you really don't want to give an entitlement until you're sure that they are eligible for it.
Commissioner Mulder.
Okay.
Oh, yep.
I just wondered, like, you know, once it's permitted and I'm the neighbor and then I show up and I say, but wait a minute, there's this problem and that problem, you didn't take that into consideration. Do you just say, too bad, we already permitted it?
So this, these should be fairly simple, and it should be the way we're envisioning this is that there's basically a checklist, that if they come in and demonstrate that they comply with everything, it's granted. And, and you know, if somebody wants to come in and complain that that person's operating a short-term rental next to me and, you know, they've got this and this and this problem, and I really don't like them, and I really don't want the short-term rental being there, it's like, nope, those aren't issues that the ordinance addresses. So it's really about what's in the ordinance. They're trying to limit discretion.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder. Thank you.
So I like the 61 days after the effective that new applications could be accepted, but I would want to put some sort of language to possibly protect the county that states, you know, somewhere like not until after 90 days will those applications be processed? And if for some reason, something that talks about if the cap is exceeded, then those application fees will be, applications will be returned or fees will be returned to people because in hypothetically, there could be an influx and staff is going, at 61 days, staff isn't going to know for sure if the cap is, it, it, I just don't want to put the county in a position where...
Why don't we just then make it after we're issuing after three months? Because frankly, it'll cost us more to refund the money than we're going to spend issuing the permit.
So if we just said if somewhere along the lines is if the cap is not exceeded after three months?
Yep.
Applications will be accepted for new. Would everyone be good with that kind of language in alternative two?
Well, the thing about that is that the cap doesn't apply everywhere. So I, I think that, that's slightly, you know, some places can apply, they're new, they're not existing, but they're outside of the cap area, so their ability to apply isn't governed by whether the cap is met or not.
Yeah, that, thank you. That is an extremely good point, and I think we should add a caveat to that that identifies that in areas where the cap applies.
Yeah. But with, with that said, you know, Thomas, I would, I would agree with some, I think what you were suggesting and what Director Ford was saying just now could be combined to, to make that language precise and...
Just before, if like after October 6, 2023, if we said in areas where the cap applies, no new STR applications will be accepted until three months after the effective date? If we did somewhere along that language, would that be?
Mm-hmm. Seems like it works.
You could be an existing one that just didn't apply originally, and then you came in later with the new people and applied, but you would be considered new, I guess, if you missed the original deadline.
Yeah. That's, yep.
Okay. So I saw a lot of head nods, so I'm going to make a motion to approve alternative two with that caveat that I, the language that I said earlier about the, in the areas where the cap applies, the new STRs, applications will be accepted after three months of effective date.
Wonderful clarification. Does the cap change every year if there's more units added to the stock?
Conceivably, yes.
Okay. And of course, in addition to the...
Not much.
I second.
Oh, you second. Thank you. Thank you for that motion, Commissioner Mulder and, and Commissioner Landry. And, and of course, in addition to what we've just been discussing, alternative two is imposing October 26th as the cutoff, you know, by which existing, evidence of existing must be presented.
Correct. Thank you for putting that on the record.
Yes. Commissioner West.
I just have a clarification. The, when we were talking about the, the tax discussion, that would not be, that's language that's not in alternative two, right? That would be a different area. Okay, great.
Yeah. Good clarification. Okay. Any other questions or clarifications on that motion before we have a vote? Okay. Then how about a voice vote on Thomas's motion for alternative two?
Aye.
All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay. So that's unanimous, moved by Mulder, seconded by Landry. Okay. Back to you, Mr. McNamara.
All right. Hold up here.
Could we get your screen again? There we go.
All right. I believe that brings us down to permit requirements. As long as everything written in is all right with the commission, a motion could be heard. If you guys have any text amendments you'd like to add or discuss, now's the time. And this is for permit requirements, beginning from administrative permit required all the way down to B.
Sure. Okay. So one clarification, I really, I, I like this change. I think what this is referring to when we say including non-conforming approvals, at least based on our discussion last time, that's specifically referring to applicants, existing applicants who meet other requirements but who would not have, would have exceeded the cap or the nature of identity, but because they were all coming in at the same time, as it were, as pre-existing, we're, we're considering them non-conforming but approved.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. That was primarily related to situations where people came in and exceeded the cap.
Right.
So that there's no risk of losing that as part of a renewal.
Or even a neighborhood density issue where they're outside the cap, but
Right.
subject to the neighborhood density, but they're all existing and they already exceed that density. Yep, that's what this basically refers to.
Right.
Okay, I, I like that. The only other thought that I had based on our discussion last time is, do we, and I think this would be the place, do we need to affirm that these can be renewed indefinitely every two years? That was also something we discussed last time. And maybe that doesn't need to be said, I don't know.
I, I feel that it's implied.
Okay.
This is a means for us to just ensure that these provisions are met and that they're, they're still compliant and don't have any violations.
Yeah.
And then while we're in this section, we have A and B. The commission did add C, which would be demonstrate that full payment of transient occupancy taxes are paid in full. That, I believe, was already added. So just to clarify, since it hasn't been typed in, that was a motion that was added, so.
Was that added by motion?
Wasn't that the first?
I don't think so.
No.
It wasn't a motion, but we did discuss.
Yeah, no, I think we discussed it.
Then a motion still needs to be added.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't.
It, it would land here, under C.
Under C, right, under permit term for short-term rentals.
So this motion is for both permit requirements and permit term for short-term rentals, is that, I'm a little bit lost in where?
I lost, what is C?
So if, if, if we were to add a provision requiring people demonstrate their full payment of transient occupancy taxes, that would be the creation of C under 60.05.7 for, for renewal.
Is it timely payment or just payment?
That would be a policy, policy discussion.
I, I agree with you that that seems like the place for it. I don't really have an opinion about, I guess, I don't, I don't know that I would support putting timely in there.
I would support no outstanding taxes due.
No outstanding.
TOT taxes or?
Okay, well, I would think we covered.
You want to limit it to TOT?
Not necessarily, I think it would be property taxes, and that's why.
So no outstanding taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, is that sufficiently clear for your, to, to put that language in there?
Yes.
Once Commissioner West makes that motion, because it was, this is how I was thinking about it, because it was her idea, I thought it was a great idea.
I think I'm just curious, am I making a motion on, I got a little bit lost, are we doing the permit requirements and permit term for short-term rentals together as one motion? Great, okay. Then I will motion that we approve permit require, the permit requirement section and the permit term for short-term rentals section with the changes to permit term for short-term rental section of including non-conforming approvals, and then adding a bullet point C that says that they demonstrate no outstanding taxes are due to Humboldt County? And I would be curious on staff if that's the appropriate wording.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner West.
Second.
Commissioner Scabdel seconds, any further discussion on this point? Okay, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously, that, and just going forward, I don't know that we need, if, if there's a section like permit requirements that there hasn't been any changes to, I don't know that we need to include that in our motion. My thought was, we're going to be affirming the changes made either in this revision or what we come up with tonight, and then, and then at the end, we're going to vote on the whole thing.
That is fine, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity, if there was something that wasn't discussed last time, that they saw, that there's an opportunity to talk about that.
Absolutely, no, I, I do, I do want to make sure that we have that opportunity to discuss every section, so, okay. So then that brings us to violations?
All right, suspension or revocation. Essentially, this means that somebody cannot continue to operate or operate if there are violations on site. And so, you know, this, this is just saying that if there's a code enforcement action, if there's a violation, if there's a complaint on site, that they wouldn't be able to, say, get their license renewed, or even apply for, for new. Applying for new is going to be in a section lower in the ordinance, but they are written in, in both provisions. So this is merely stating that somebody couldn't get a renewal if there is a violation pending and not remedied, or if there's a violation on, on record.
Through the chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just for clarity, it's usually complaints that then lead to a further investigation, if you will, and then if there is a violation notice, that's how this process typically works, is what I understand.
Yes, a complaint does not necessarily mean that a violation is occurring.
Yeah, because I just, if I didn't want my neighbor to have one, and I just called and complained about everything until the point that, you know, they couldn't get renewed, I, I think that this needs to be, I don't know where it gets clarified so that everyone knows they're following the same rules.
So, that would really be what we just talked about above, under the renewals. This, this actually has a slightly different purpose, and that's to put people on notice that if they don't resolve their violation, there is a new provision, and this is something for the planning commission to consider, that there's a new provision being proposed that the planning director can suspend the permit. So that doesn't currently exist in the zoning ordinance. And then if the violation is not resolved even after it's been suspended, then it may be revoked, and revocation can only occur according to the existing ordinance by action of the board of supervisors. So this is providing a progressive means of enforcement, and it's really just to put people on notice that there, there, there are consequences.
Commissioner Scabdel.
Yep, through the chair, just, can I give a, just test a, for example, so somebody receives a permit, is operating a short-term rental, and maybe there's a complaint to environmental health that the septic system is failing, and environmental health investigates and determines that to be true, and issues some notice or citation. Would that be a violation?
That would be a violation of the county code. And this section actually does refer to the zoning ordinance. But that would not necessarily include environmental health. So if you wanted it to read like that, this section that says this section should refer to a violation of this county code?
But it was my understanding.
No, 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 I'm reading 08 up above. Without resolution of the violations of this section, that refers to the zoning ordinance. So, so if, if they wanted to expand that. So it would be resolution of the violations of, of this, or, or of the county code may result in code enforcement action. That would cover the scenario you're talking about. So it would not just be inclusive of the zoning ordinance, it would be the entire county code, which would allow some of the other concerns relative to septic issues to be addressed.
Okay, so that is a, a, a change, a significant small change we're making based on this.
If that's, if that's the commission's design.
No, I understand that, but that's, that's, I just want to call that out. That's not, that's new from this discussion. Commissioner West?
I was just going to say that I support that idea.
You support that?
Could you give, give me a little more information on what kinds of codes it could in, I don't, I'm not, I don't know all the county codes, so what are we talking about here? Just a kind of a...
Well, the, the county code includes everything from building codes, to health codes, to public right-of-way codes.
Commissioner Mulder?
I think that's a great idea, and I'm glad that you brought it up, because that, in my mind, I'm like, hey, how do we not put a roadblock in the process of getting applications, but also how do we hear concerns of, you know, neighborhoods with, you know, over, septic systems that are being used over capacity? So I think if you made that a motion, I would definitely be interested in seconding that to get through that section.
Okay, well, yeah, that's my concern, is giving the county, giving us some, some way to, you know, not renew permits where through the course of operation, we've had some sort of violation, whether it be septic, or a building addition without a permit, or something of that nature. So I'm happy to make that motion on whatever section we're on. If somebody could help me with the wording, because I'm not sure.
Modify section 60.05.8 violations to exchange the language of this section to read of the Humboldt County code.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of that change, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, great. Thank you. Back to you.
All righty. So now we're going to go down to home share rental. This is just time for, if you guys have requests for tax amendment, now would be the time. There are no changes until we get down to noise, so just want to highlight that.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neil.
Can home share rental also include on your property, like, it doesn't have to be in the dwelling unit that you live in, but on one single property? That's what I would like to change, because I think as long as the homeowner is on the property, then I'm good with that, and I don't think they need to be in my house necessarily, they could be in a unit in the backyard, I'm still there, I'm monitoring it, it's, it's helping me to have income, to pay my expenses to live. As someone who's past retirement age, it's getting scary to think about not working and not having income come in just to pay your PG&E bill, you know, you might have to rent out something on your property. So I, I, I would like to it be on the parcel as opposed to in the house.
I see Commissioner Mulder's hand up.
I would, I would support that, and I would support that even if there was language for, you know, if there was multiple housing units on the parcel and the, the primary owner operated the other, whatever, units they were, because from my viewpoint, a lot of times, places that I've seen like that, they aren't going into the long-term rental housing stock because people want it available for their grandkids to visit twice a year, and then these other family members to visit a couple of times a year. So I don't feel that it would be going against the intent of preserving housing stock using that information.
Commissioner West, and then I want to get a word in about this.
I could be in favor of that, however, I do think there are scenarios where you have a multifamily property, like an apartment building, and that opens the door for the entire apartment. I, I would like to see some considerations for how we handle multifamily in this scenario.
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting that multifamily apartment buildings are so fall under that, that's a different type of rental.
Okay, yes.
Just to clarify, when I was saying support, I, multifamily was not in my, I was thinking like a housing structure and then another housing structure, and like outdoor, probably, you know, at least a half acre, maybe a third acre lot, if not bigger, so that way they aren't impacting their neighbors. But I'm, I'm not, I was never thinking, I just want to be clear, I was never thinking multifamily when that idea was, support was brought up.
So I, I want to be careful here before we go too far down this path, because I, I think maybe what I, could you take a moment, Mr. McNamara, to just lay out in summary, what are the different rules that apply to a home share versus a short-term rental? There, let's make sure we don't overfix this problem, as it were. There may be a better way to, to deal with the situation like somebody brought up tonight of, of multiple residences on your property, but...
So the difference is that there is a resident caretaker on site, or there is a home share occurring within the same structure. So if you wanted to make a provision allowing for home shares to also be allowed on the same parcel, you could edit the definition of home share, and if you wanted to preclude...
He, he asked, what's the difference between a home share and an STR, just start there?
Well, I mean, what's the different rules that apply, that apply differently depending on whether it is a home share rental or a short-term rental?
As long as it meets the same health and safety regulations, it's merely a caretaker on site, or, or literally sharing the home.
It doesn't have to be the homeowner or the property owner, it could just be anybody that you hired to stay there?
It would be the permit holder.
Well, I, my, my, where I was going is if it was the property owner on, you know, just trying to generate additional revenue, when you just say, well, I'm going to pay you to stay in one room, that's a different scenario to me, I think. I'm talking about a rule that allows a property owner who lives on their property to rent out multiple scenarios, be it a room in their house, or a separate building on the property. I want to be able to encourage that.
I just want to make sure that my question is, is being understood, though. It, like, as I understand it, one big difference between home share rentals and short-term rentals, as the terms are used, home share rentals are exempt from the cap. Short-term rentals are subject to the cap, so...
Within the Humboldt Bay area.
Within the Humboldt Bay area, yes. That, that's an important point. But I mean, also, according to the way this still reads, the stuff about, you know, SB9, ADU, AOB, again, as written, that comes into effect under short-term rentals, not under home share rentals, although maybe that's an oversight.
No, actually, it's not.
It's not?
Because the thing that's going on there is that the basic residence, the res, yeah, the residence is still being used by a long-term resident. And so it's being shared. So that is a subtle distinction, and that's why there is a difference there
Okay.
between those provisions.
Well, that, that's all, I didn't, I didn't, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
I, I'm not disagreeing with the, with the wish to do some version of...
You're just saying this isn't the place to do.
Well, I just want to make sure that, that we know what we're doing. If we make a change right here, what that does to the overall thing, but, but yes, Commissioner.
I just wanted to point out one other thing. We did indicate, and this would be something that would need to be, have some thought given to it, is that currently it's one per parcel.
Right.
Okay, so that would need to be rethought a little bit. And then the other thing that we did, and perhaps this is not something the planning commission wants to do relative to multifamily, but it was really kind of a social justice and equity issue that we were trying to get at, is that if somebody lives in an apartment and has the approval of the property owner to rent out a bedroom, you know, shouldn't, wouldn't, isn't it fair for them to be able to do that? And, and maybe that's going too far relative to multifamily, because I, we do understand that multifamily is largely the most affordable type of housing that we have. And, and so there's a trade-off there. But that, that was the ambition of including multifamily in that.
Okay. Commissioner Mulder, you've had your hand up. Okay. Commissioner Mulder, you've had your hand up.
So, you hit on, one of the points is like, not affecting the cap for the home share. That's the way I understood it, but the other thing, and I haven't seen it in here, but I remember we talked as a commission, is potentially allowing priority processing for home shares because the intent of this ordinance is to protect and preserve, part of it is protect and preserve housing stock, so home share falls in line with that. And this is, it, I swear it was from one of our workshops, so I just, I want to make sure we remember that part as well as we're going through here.
Yes.
So, if I could, Chair?
Yes.
I, I think that you probably need to kind of systematically work through some of the things that have been brought up. You know, do, do you want the home shares to only be available to property owners that are residing on the property? Then do you want the home share to be expanded to more than one unit on the property? So it, it would be good to maybe start to think through those and maybe get consensus on that.
Thank you, I agree. Commissioner Scavdall?
Yeah, I think I actually took us into this conversation at our last meeting, and it was related to a member of the public from Southern Humboldt that was, that had a property that they lived on that had some cabins or tiny homes. And I still think, I think this belongs under short-term rental, where it says this section applies to short-term rental of whole dwelling units. And perhaps multiple independent dwelling units on owner-occupied properties. I think that's where, I think, not to confuse this with home share-
Right, yes.
Which is renting out a bedroom in your home.
Right.
My simple understanding. So- So, under short-term rental, 60.05.10, it says this section applies to short-term rental of whole dwelling units. So that would be outside owner potentially, or somebody rent, you know, and/or multiple dwelling units on owner-occupied properties. So they would still be under the cap if they're in a cap area. It's just, it's just giving owner-occupied properties the ability to have more than one unit on the parcel that they're renting.
I, I just want to say, I had flagged that at the bottom of page six, per parcel limit, which, which is still under this section, and that seemed like the place that that change could be made. Because it says for these short-term rentals, i.e., you know, entire dwelling units, only one per legal parcel, but we could add a sentence that says where a parcel has-
For owner-occupied parcels.
Well, if, if I could, I think the importance of what Commissioner Scavdall is bringing up, though, is that the short-term rental is being redefined a little bit here, to be expanded, to allow those multiple parcel properties under 60.05.10, and then we would still need to change that provision on page six to include a, a number in terms of what's the maximum number that would be allowed on, on the parcel.
Yeah, sorry, your hands up. Commissioner Mulder's had his hand up, and then Commissioner West.
So, I want to hear staff, but I think the Director made a good point. If, if we're trying to change some language further on, it would be important to have that language in the definitions as well, because the beginning of 60.05.1, that is the, the beginning of the definitions. Is that correct or incorrect?
I, I'm not, actually not seeing why that current definition, 60.05.10, needs to be changed if we wanted to say, "And for certain parcels which are owner-occupied, multiple..." Maybe I'm missing something, but I don't understand why, why we're changing that, that first definition if we just add an allowance later on.
I, I, it doesn't have to be perhaps, but one of the things that is often helpful is to define what you're talking about early.
Okay.
So that then you don't have to go down and interpret like what C is all about, where now you're allowing multiple, what does that mean? That would just be from a interpretation standpoint, an application standpoint. I want people to read what we're gonna allow as early as possible, and then define a number later. But it's, it, that's a stylistic preference.
Okay. Commissioner West, did you have your hand up here?
Um, just when we're, when we're talking about permitting multiple dwelling units on a property, would they count as one permit, or would they count each separately as separate permits?
Do you want to take a, do you, do you have an answer to that?
I, I, I concur with Director Ford. I think that you would have to identify the definitions first before you can make that determination.
Okay, I'm, yes, I'm starting to see how that works.
And I just want to go, where we concluded the last meeting, by the way, when I brought this up, I'll just remind you, was that nothing precludes somebody from applying for a special permit under this circumstance. So even though it's not specifically stated in here as being currently allowed, you could still apply under the special permit process.
Oh, thank you for reminding me that.
For those multiple units.
Okay, got it. That's, that's, yes, I had actually forgotten that, but you're, at the time, I think I knew that. So, right, it's, it's not that this hypothetical property couldn't have, they, they just would have to go that pathway, yeah, okay, got it, thanks. And Commissioner Lander, yes, I see you.
So, the hypothetical that was put out there that, you know, maybe someone on their parcel has multiple units, is, wouldn't that be kind of covered in not permitted per C up there?
C would also need to be modified-
Yes.
To reflect that, yeah.
It, it, it would need to be changed if we wanted to do what we're, well, I mean, if we wanted to make it possible to do it without a special permit.
Correct.
Yeah. Commissioner West?
Given that it is possible to do it with a special permit, I, I think I land in keeping it how it is instead of expanding the definition.
Yes, Commissioner O'Neil.
I just wanted to encourage, and I don't know if this is the right place, but if, if I live on my property and I'm doing this because I'm trying to generate revenue so that I can live on my property, you know, because some people don't make that much when they retire. They should be, if, as long as they're on the property, then they should be able to rent out multiple units. Maybe there's a size, like you've mentioned, a half acre or whatever, if you have more than one, but I think that that's different than just putting a caretaker on there and doing this all over the place, or I don't even live in the county and I'm just trying to, you know, turn this into a lucrative business, because we do live in the redwoods, and so people do want to come here. So, it, I just want to make that distinction, that it's, it's only if I live on the property and I'm just trying to supplement my income.
Yeah, and I just want to say, because I, I didn't mean to shut down having that point that you raised, you know, and maybe it does mean, maybe the best way to do it is to consider amending the definition of what home share rental is, maybe there's some other way, but I think your, your larger point that, that there should be maybe certain special considerations given to those who are renting out units on property that they inhabit.
There, there's a couple of different ways to do it, frankly. That's, that's why it could be done under home share, it could be done here. I, I think from, it, it just really depends on your preference, and I think that we're still not completely getting to the point that you've raised, which is you want to make this available, and I use the "you" in a personal sense, not in a derogatory sense, but make this available to people who are using this as a source of income, you know, to protect their ability to stay on their property. And the way it's written right now, it's far more inclusive than that.
Okay.
So I would, we're talking in, I just want to point in clarification, we're talking in the home share portion, is that correct, or?
I mean, that's where we were.
We bounced all over the place, but the last statement was in regards to home share, correct?
We, we started with home share, we looked at modifying STRs. I think the comment was, what's the difference between a home share and a short-term rental? And so we began exploring that, and then we began exploring a modification to short-term rentals to allow a property that's occupied by the property owner to have more than, than one unit that's being rented. So, could I offer that perhaps the easiest thing to do right now? Because I don't think we're gonna finish tonight anyway. And so maybe it would be better to just understand the concept of what you want to accomplish and let us go away and, and try to make that modification.
Okay.
So, because I'm, I'm hearing a couple of things going on.
Yeah.
And rather than trying to write it on the dais, it probably makes sense for us to think about it for a while.
I think if, if we acknowledge that we're not going to be able to get through everything satisfactorily in another hour or less, then, then that makes much more sense to, I think, yeah. We've, we've made the point that what we're looking for, or what we would like to see options for.
Well, I'm not sure that I understand there's consensus here on that.
Okay. But to at least have an option on the table to decide whether we want to make that change, I guess, is what I meant. Or, or, maybe I'm not following-
So I, I'd like to know what the option, the alternatives are that you'd at least like to consider.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner O'Neil would like to see this limited in terms of home shares to the owner. That it has to be owner-occupied. That's not how it's written right now. And I know that there's a desire to struggle with, are we going to allow more than one unit in a situation where it's owner-occupied? And, and so, I, 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 I mean, yeah, I can articulate those right now, but is, are those worth spending time on, or is there more that you're looking for?
Well, Commissioner Mulder?
Okay, so back, now I know where we're at. I just want to, for my understanding, everything being as the home share does not count against the cap, is the way I understand it, I would feel more comfortable if this didn't say caretaker and it said homeowner, because everything I heard as far as testimony of allowing this priority and not affecting the cap was like, hey, I own this place, I bought it X amount of years ago and I can't afford it, you know, this is how I subsidize or supplement my income. So like, I would like to see language that supports that. And, I mean, I don't know if you, even before STR, you could do maybe home or property share rental, maybe, a different section possibly, if people are okay with that idea. I also do hear the concerns where if we allow too many units under one permit, it may really affect the cap in the Humboldt Bay area, possibly. So I think I'd want to hear a little bit more comments from fellow commissioners, but I'd be good with moving that to homeowner, and I'd also be good with, you know, staying till ten and getting through it tonight.
Commissioner West?
I'm torn on this one. I, I, like, I, I feel similarly to the discussion about the concerns about the caretaker. However, I do think that there are instances where like a renter may also be acting in good faith and, and have a, a home share operation, and that be doable as well. And I just, I don't know how to get there with the policy that allows for this kind of situation when it works well, and prevent what Commissioner O'Neil is discussing with, with outside.
Well, what I'm thinking is if I live in another state and I just want to buy a bunch of places here, then I can go find somebody to live on the property, and I can own five of these. And, and what I was trying to do is encourage the person who does live there and is trying to supplement their income, so they can live there. Because as you get closer to retirement, it gets kind of scary if you're living on a limited income and it costs $3,000 a year for, more for taxes as the property values go up and insurance is going up, pretty soon you can't eat, you know. So, that's what I'm trying to encourage, is that if you need to make a living off your own property, that, then you should be able to have some advantage over someone who's just buying these things and sticking somebody on the property. And if this isn't the right place to put it, I'm okay with that, but I think that there should be some advantage to someone who lives on the property, and it shouldn't have to be in another bedroom if you do have a unit or willing to build a unit on your property. I don't think they have to live in the house with you.
I, I appreciate that concern, I think it's admirable and I agree with it. I'm not sure how to manage it, and I think that we're potentially limiting people that have to rent a home in an area where there aren't a lot of rentals available. They may have to rent a home over their ability and want to sublet a room, or a short-term rental, just to be able to afford their rental property. So, I have to rent a three-bedroom house, I want to rent one room out so I can make the rent, so would we-
I'm not saying that you shouldn't be able to do that.
Well, it wouldn't be the owner of the house, it could be owned by some outside corporation, in fact. I'm just renting it, so how do we, that's what I'm struggling with.
I think we're gonna let you think about something and bring it back to us. If we're in agreement.
If, if I could, Chair?
Yes.
I, I think one of the reasons I'm trying to push on the Commission a little bit to kind of land where, where you want to be, is because it's really hard to write something without having a target. And one of the things that I want to say right now is that what you want to accomplish, Commissioner O'Neil, is currently written in the ordinance. A property owner can absolutely operate a home share right now and as a means to enhance their income and remain in their property. That's absolutely there. But it's also currently written that if somebody else owns the property, perhaps somebody out of town, and they want to rent it out to somebody, and either that tenant wants to offer it as a home share or part of their lease agreement with their tenant is that it's a home share, that opportunity exists as well.
Make sure I understand, but here we're talking about this doesn't affect the cap, right?
Correct.
But when we get to the part where we're talking about how many can you have, maybe I have a different attitude about the number they can have. And so if you're allowing more flexibility here, and maybe less over there, that's what I'm getting at. I'm, I'm wanting to promote the person who lives on the property and rents out units or rooms. It could be both. I just didn't want it limited to only being in the same residence.
Okay, that, see, and that becomes then a slightly different discussion, because that really gets down to, are we going to create a provision within home share or a hybrid, as, as Commissioner Mulder mentioned, whereby you've got the ability to rent out, say, the accessory dwelling unit or live in the ADU if it's not income-qualified by SB9? As a, 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 either the primary unit or the STR, or the, the home share. I mean, it, literally the home shares can be redefined to include an additional or two additional units on the property when it's occupied, you know, by a caretaker.
Commissioner Mulder?
After flipping back and- After flipping back and rereading what the director is actually talking and looking at our application process, we see that we already approve evidence of property owner consent if the permit holder is someone other than the property owner. So then with having that language there, my whole concerns of the caretaker thing, I mean, that's really, when you think about it, that is just way too much work. And I don't know that there's enough meat on the bone to, like, as far as financially, to like strategically place this person here and this person there and pay them. So I retract my concerns about the same caretaker versus property owner. And I'm good with the language in the home share rental. And I would just be like, back to the point, do we want to try to add in multiple units here or try to modify an STR or make it a separate provision for property share? Is where I was trying to recenter the.
I don't really care, but when it comes to talking about how many of these things you can have, if you're not on the property, then I think five is too many.
Well, I think.
Can we have that conversation when we get to that?
Right.
Right, but so I was, because we're going in this order, I wanted to make sure where it needs to be captured, it's captured. Or else we have to go back and change it again.
All right, I agree with you.
Maybe we skip this for now and go back to it and get through the rest of it.
Okay, yeah, I think, I mean, we have a bit more time. And I'm not sure we can get through everything, but I think we can, we can get through some more of this and then come back to what are the sort of parking lot issues, as it were, that we need to try to find some way to work in or alter. I guess that's what I would suggest. Yes, Commissioner West?
Thinking about that process, I think there are certain circumstances that if we end up changing a definition, but we are down the road and but we've already considered pieces of that section. My vote may, how I consider that section may change if we change the definition. So I just want to be cognizant that that's a part of the discussion as we go.
Yeah, good, good point, absolutely. And I really don't, you know, I mean, nobody wants to drag this out unnecessarily and, but I don't think that this is an unnecessary or repetitive conversation we're having. I mean, I feel like we're capturing some things that maybe feel like they've slipped through the cracks in the ordinance as drafted. So I think it's time well spent. That said, should we maybe move on to further down on page three where we actually do get, well, the sections that we haven't discussed yet that later on that page? Laura, could we get the screen share back, please?
Are you talking about the neighborhood quality part with the time difference or all the way down to?
I guess I'm talking about neighborhood, yeah. I think, I think neighborhood quality, I mean, we really didn't get beyond the definition of home share rental. We didn't even get into the standards. If anybody wants to mention something about the standards for home share rentals.
If I could, two chair, one of the differences between the home share and the short-term rental is the home share does not include a provision for the Good Neighbor Guide.
Right.
Because the, you know, understanding is there's the resident caretaker and that really takes the place of that.
Okay. Yes, I think it's really good to be well aware of what the differences are as drafted. But basically, to the commission now, is there anything that you're seeing here on the rest of this, the provisions under home share rental? Before we get down to short-term rental, at the bottom of page three, are there any other provisions above that that we want, that you guys have thoughts about? Yes, Commissioner West?
Not as, not as things stand right now. I think if we were to nangle with the definitions of things, I would maybe want to revisit some of these.
Yeah.
But at the moment, I'm good with them.
So we only care about the noise at night and during the day they can be noisy, so why?
No.
No. I thought it's 65 decibels during the hours of 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM and 60 decibels from 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
I guess I would still say, I appreciate that we changed 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM. I still think 60 decimals, if we're gonna use a decibel limit, 60 decibels seems pretty high for overnight noise limits.
Depending on where you are, it is. And probably for most of the areas, it can be reduced.
It's not, it's not the most important issue, but I mean, I don't know if anybody else feels like we want to tweak that further or not. You agree with that. I don't, I don't know my decibels well enough to know how much more we want to tweak it, but I know it is, it's an exponential scale, right? So even taking it down to 50 or something like that would be.
How about if we come back with some options?
Sure, great. Anything else on those sections or can, are we ready to move to?
Do we both just apply to the tenants? Or could, if I'm the owner, can I come in there with my green machine and chainsaw during the day and clean up?
As I read it, it, well, it's a good question, I guess.
Yeah, I don't think that it places a limitation on who's making the noises, as is currently written.
So I have to get all electric appliance, or you have to have those anyway pretty soon, I guess?
It's only a problem if you get a complaint.
Right. And we've already heard plenty of people who say, hey, wait, what about the, what about everybody else who's making loud noise? That's a bigger issue that this ordinance isn't going to take on. But I just want to acknowledge, I don't even know that we need a vote, but, but we've made, there were, there's a couple of changes in this section. Just this 8:00 AM, 6:00 AM becomes 8:00 AM. And we've added the word home share rental. Where I'll find with it? I think when it's something like that, doesn't require a vote.
We're acknowledging that we accept the highlighted versions in the home share section.
Okay. I think that's reasonable. I was, I was thinking we would vote on the ones that were already called out as a box, you know, a named alternative. But, but I think these other things, if there's no objection, we don't need to vote. 60.05.10?
All right, so this provision was written in to allow for short-term rentals to be able to operate for three months of the year and utilize the remaining nine months as potentially renting out to, you know, traveling nurses, students, what have you. So, and that would not be counted against the cap. All righty, we'll go ahead and move on then.
Everybody good with that? Okay, I think, I think, yeah, I just wanted to have that on the record. I like that change a lot and everybody else seems to agree.
All right, next we get down to alternative owner builder. There were a number of comments, people suggesting that the provisions, which would, you know, preclude people with AOB to be able to apply for a short-term rental, be removed entirely. And so that has been listed as alternative three. Should be noted if that is removed, that a modification to the AOB ordinance would be required. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, AOB allows for an alternative owner builder to use different kinds of building materials and that the structures are not reviewed by the building department as a part of their final inspection.
Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
Just, the AOB is a big one to me. And I totally agree that we aren't going to change that code. But just in 60.05.1, 0.1, 4.1, is there any way? At the end of it, it says at the time of permit issuance, would it, could we hone in and clarify? At the time the AOB permit was issued? So that way it'd be 100% clear that you're held to the building code at that time that the AOB was issued. So that way someone doesn't read this and be like, oh, yeah, you're getting after effect, but it's 2023, so you're held to that building code standard.
That makes sense to make that modification.
Commissioner West?
So I think the alternative three is proposing to remove the alternative owner builder requirement, right? So I, I do not support alternative three. I think that, or, excuse me, I do not support alternative three. I liked having the consideration that their alternative owner builder permits are a special case. It concerns me that we would allow a business to operate in a dwelling that was not permitted appropriately for that kind of operation. But there is a fact, there is that section that remediates that by offering folks to be able to be permitted after the fact. And for me, that is a good course.
One small detail, aren't there some situations when, like with sprinkler systems or something, subsequent building codes have actually relaxed relative to what they may have been at the time when an AOB dwelling was built and permitted? In other words, like, there could be situations where it is easier for them to bring it into code compliance with current building codes than with the codes at the time their AOB permit was issued. Is that possible? Is that true?
There's, there's usually at best trade-offs.
A what?
Trade-offs. It's not just something is not required. It's usually, this may not have been required at that time, but something else is more stringent. We've been exploring this with a couple of different people at length. And, and so the way we apply the building code is that it goes back to the code that was in effect at the time the AOB permit was issued. Thank you for that, Commissioner Mulder. That's a good addition. But if somebody wants to use a more recent version of the code, they're, they can.
Okay, that's already essentially your practice.
That's by practice.
Got it.
And somebody else made a request that probably is an easy add to say that the AOB or the building permit may be applied for at the same time as the permit for the short-term rental. Concern being that if they have to wait for the building permit to be issued, they may not be able to be in line to get their existing STR. And I mean, if they're going to go through the effort of getting it permitted, I have no problem really letting them get in line during those first two months and apply for the building permit at the same time.
Yeah, Commissioner Scavdall?
I support that and agree. I had a similar comment, though. If somebody has to, has to come in for a special permit, it would seem that they should be able to, that may take a little bit longer and I'm concerned that they might not be considered existing or they might not get their special permit until after the cap is set or something. So if we have existing operations aren't covered under the standard permit and have to get a special permit, I would hope that they would still have the opportunity to be grandfathered in, providing they get the special permit.
I have a question. What about people who don't finish their permit? Like they go and get it, because this has happened a couple of times where they get a permit, but they never get the final inspection. And that seems to happen, I think, more than you think. Because I bought a house where that happened and I couldn't get my financing until I went back and did everything they should have done to finish the permit. Does that happen very often?
It happens more than anybody would like to admit. Some people, they don't find it.
Where does that fall in all of this?
Well, I think where that falls in this particular case is that the basic provisions of the STR ordinance requires that it be a permitted structure, which includes going.
That would be something you would check off your checklist and they might find out that they have a house that never finished the inspection process.
Right.
Well, I just want to say, we spent a fair amount of time discussing AOB last time, but subsequently, I, the staff report was helpful and clarifying about whether there really was another, another path under the AOB code that could allow for a quote-unquote "change of occupancy", which really seems like it means change of ownership, not occupancy. And even if it were applied to, you know, occupancy as in tenants, the idea that, that a, you know, waiver of liability, hold harmless agreements with every one or two night, you know, rental is, seems overly burdensome. Basically, I'm just saying I appreciate the data, the explanation that you guys gave us on that point. So with that said, I, and with other things that we discussed last time, I will not support alternative three. I don't want to remove that provision. Any other thoughts about alternative three?
I don't know anyone that wants to open that can of worms, honestly.
Right.
Even myself included.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I come back to my question that I thought I asked earlier?
Oh.
Will special permits be handled in a similar fashion as the building permit?
Yes.
AOBs?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Was that a motion to add that language in there, Commissioner Scavdall? Including that little?
I don't, I don't think it needs to be added. I just needed that clarification from the director. If you think it needs to be added, you can.
I was, that, but the language we were talking about, that the, the application for a conversion of AOB to an after-the-fact can be submitted at the same time as the STR application. I don't know, I don't remember the exact language, but it's, I would like to make sure that we hone that in and make a motion on that and also make a motion to add in that language that at the time of the AOB permit issuance in 60.05.1, 0.1, 4.1.
I think we could make one motion that addresses alternative three and that change.
And in my motion, I'm, we are not accepting alternative three.
Okay, did you just make a motion?
That's, all of that stuff I was blabbering out there, I was trying to make that a motion.
Was that sufficiently clear to staff?
Yes.
Yes. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, then all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Before we jump ahead to short-term rental permit limitations, does anybody else wish to have a discussion of the law and/or policy issues surrounding the prohibition on accessory dwelling units? And whether, whether we want to look at the possibility that that might change here or be modified in some way? Commissioner Scavdall?
I did hear an interesting idea at the conference or at the Zoom call we attended, some of us attended today, where some agencies to help encourage the development of ADUs were allowing them to be used as a short-term rental for a limited period of time. It was like three to five years. After which they could not.
Right.
Longer be short-term rentals would have to become, you know, part of the housing stock. I thought it was an interesting idea to help encourage development of ADUs. But I don't believe that's an issue, necessarily an issue for us here.
Well, I really thought that was an interesting, too. This was a nationwide call. And so it's not clear to me where, what jurisdictions he was referring to. And California does have some particular laws on this point, which, which govern us. govern us. I personally was curious to understand just a little bit better if staff or council knows if there is any wiggle room under state law to make allowances for the use of ADUs, because I think there could at least be, there could be a policy argument made that, done right, balancing the considerations in some way that limits the use of ADUs, one way or another, as short term rentals, you could incentivize the creation of more ADUs and ultimately grow, help grow the affordable housing stock. At least, it seems theoretical from a policy standpoint that that argument can be made, but I'm not even clear what the sort of legal wiggle room on that point is.
Yeah, I apologize, I had intended to have that researched and bring that back. We can do that for the next meeting. I would like to point out, though, that, you know, SB 2 and then 9 modified the California provisions to add much, much more leeway and restrictions on what a jurisdiction can do in terms of restricting ADUs. And then, we've also received grant money to enable us to assist with development of ADUs, and I don't know if we ever gave you a presentation on it, I know we showed it to the board, but we, there's a whole website devoted to how to develop an ADU. It shows you the process, it has a tool in it that you can figure out what's going to cost you, what your return would be to develop an ADU, and then we're trying to get standard plans, that if people come in and just develop those, that they're expedited permitting. But all the work that has gone into that has resulted in the number of ADUs in the county to substantially increase. I mean, if, it's close to triple, I mean, just an incredible increase in the number of ADUs that we've seen, and that is frankly, one of our primary strategies right now, to see housing built.
And I think what's implied in that is that maybe there's enough already there to sweeten the deal for building ADUs to bring down the cost of doing so, that we don't need to muddy the waters by saying, and maybe some of them, some of the time, can be short term rentals for some period, if we're already having enough people wanting to do them anyway.
We are seeing substantially increased number of ADUs being built right now.
Can you just move into your area and run out your house?
Okay, well, other thoughts on this? Or can we move on?
My only quick thoughts is, in my mind, I was like, oh yeah, that'd be great, but I also am like, okay, there was so much law in that ADU policy that you can't do it, so I just went out there. I mean, I know if it was somehow legal, there'd probably be dozens of these built within the county.
If you could recoup your investment in four years, then, yeah, you might do it, but if you can't...
It's good, so I'm accepting of it, and I'm good.
Okay, well, it was just...
But that would be a change of another ordinance, it wouldn't be in this ordinance, right?
It would be, yes, it would require, if we did anything to change, if we wanted to change this, as we're discussing, it would require getting into the ADU ordinance.
And we'd have to know if that was legal in the state of California.
Right.
We'll bring back information for you to consider on that.
Enough said, then, thank you. Okay, then, shall we, should I hand it back to Mr. McNamara and move into the short term rental permit limitations section?
All right, thank you. So, as originally wrote, written in the draft, no more than 2% of housing stock may be permitted as short term rentals within the Greater Humboldt Bay area, is comprised within our community plan areas. An alternative has been written, which, you know, in an effort to preserve neighborhood integrity in these community plan areas, which just identifies that that 2% limit would be applied per community plan area, as opposed to evenly dispersed across those plan areas around Humboldt Bay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Around Humboldt Bay and the other towns that are listed?
Yes, each one of these community plan areas is applicable.
Yep.
Thank you.
I will just say, I'm still in favor of this alternative. For me, it helps really get to the heart of what we heard from folks who had concerns about saturation in their neighborhoods and in their communities. We have communities that are very disproportionately affected, where there are lots of short term rentals, so I am in support of alternative four.
And you're already going to let them all come in initially, so, you know, it's not going to harm the ones that are already there, if they can already exceed the 2%, so nobody who's in business right now, it would only affect additional people coming in in the future. But I don't know, without an analysis of where we sit right now, when we won't know until they actually apply, how many are going to be in each area?
I think we have those numbers, I thought we provided them to you at the workshop, we can bring those numbers back.
I don't recall if we...
Those numbers were provided in the September 21st workshop, and so it may be best to bring them back, since they've been buried in each planning commission packet since then.
You mean the numbers as in, like, the estimated percentage of housing stock that is currently STR in those planning areas?
Yes, estimated number in those planning areas.
What would this, the impact from changing it to this?
I don't suppose you happen to have that page that you could pull up and share, since we're kind of on this issue now?
I personally don't, John, you might be able to.
Yeah, I can pull it up, I need to...
It may take a minute. Just a recap of the discussion that occurred. So, when the numbers were presented, you know, it wasn't necessarily a uniform consensus among your commission, and the reason for that is because in certain plan areas, you do see a disproportionate amount of short term rentals, as opposed to, say, other community plan areas, and so that's kind of the caveat here.
I get that, and I don't think that this was something that we had consensus on from the discussion we had last time. As a Commissioner.
I want clarity. Commissioner O'Neill asserted that the, all of the existing ones, even in the areas that are disproportionately impacted, we were going to allow in...
Well, that's what he said earlier.
Okay, is...
Didn't you?
I think that's right. I mean, that's my understanding, too.
For that 60 days, the first group, everyone's going to get permitted.
They're going to be permitted but nonconforming, I guess, in the sense that they may not comply with the particular provisions pertaining to the cap or the neighborhood density, but if they're existing and in good standing, without...
It just impacts the next group that comes in, because if they've exceeded the 2%, then if we go with this, if they've already exceeded, if there's no more new ones going to, which might be an advantage for the existing ones, because then there isn't as much competition.
Well, it certainly is.
And, Mr. Chair, I just wanted clarity, is that indeed...
Do you have to ask him? Because...
Well, I thought I asked you, and you threw the chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That is the case.
I'm sorry, I was focused on trying to find that information. Could you ask the question again?
Okay, so, all the existing ones, even in the areas that are, say, as high as 12% as far as STRs, those would be permitted, because they are already existing, and then our ordinance would then basically hold that area, if we accepted the alternative, would hold that area at 2%, the ones that are listed. So maybe they're currently at 12, but we wouldn't add anything else in that area until it fell below the 2%. Am I understanding it correctly? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill.
So with that understanding, it is conceivable that we could end up with more STRs under alternative four.
That is also correct.
Than we have under the current alternative.
I think I'm missing something.
Okay, so, so each of these areas are going to be limited to the existing number of STRs, or 2%, whichever's...
Right, right, right.
Okay. So that means each one of those areas are going to be at their current capacity or current allocation. Some of them, if they're under, they're going to be able to come up to 2%.
Ah, yeah.
And the areas that aren't listed here don't have a cap at all.
Right.
So theoretically, you could have more.
I see what you're saying, because the ones that, in the caps, that do exceed 2%, perhaps by a lot within that cap, they can get grandfathered in, but that opens up more space in the ones that are below, yeah, yeah. I hadn't thought of it that way, actually. That's good. Commissioner Mulder.
Someone could have watched that September 21st hearing, and then swooped up property in those lower areas, teed it up, ready to go.
They'd have to move pretty fast.
I've seen deals closing a day.
Okay.
So Laura, could you share a screen?
Yes, we'll come back to you first, there.
So here is the information that we provided.
Right. Yes, yes, we did.
It was originally, we also originally had this in a map, but so, like, you can see in the coastal greater, this would be in the coastal zone. So this is for that whole area, this is for like the Trinidad area plan, it's currently at 6.97%. McKinleyville area in the coastal zones at 1.55, Humboldt Bay area plans at 1.57, and Eel River plan is .9. When we get into the inland area, the Trinidad and West Haven area is coming in at 8.33%. The McKinleyville inland portion is a 1.34. Fieldbrook Glendale's at 2.14. Blue Lake community plan area is at 2.01. Arcata community plan area is at 1.84. Jacobi Creek is at 2.17. Freshwater's 1.66. Eureka community plan area is at .68. Fortuna is at 1.2. Hydesville Carlotta is at .22, and Rio del Scocha is at .62. And then, the number in the far right is the vacancy rate, but that goes back, I believe, to the 20th census. So those numbers are maybe a little bit dated.
So, all of these guys could come in, and then, because if it was listed by the different areas, then the areas that are below 2% could still go up to 2%, so you could potentially then have more, because you're not limiting the total to 2%.
Right. Commissioner West, you had your hand up before.
And I think my intent, and I didn't make this clear enough last time for, when I was talking about it, my intent, when I suggested this, was to retain the 2% overall limit, and then have a 2% per area, because you would have, like, ostensibly, if you have 2% per area, you still have a 2% overall limit, and that's where I land on this. I'm not, my intention is not to go, for me, the 2% number is too high already, it's a compromise I'm willing to make, but I'm not in support of anything that would increase our number of short term rentals over 2%.
I do have a question about, okay, so the number that's been shared, 1.66% roughly, or estimated number of STRs as a percentage of, that's the overall, an incorporated county housing stock, is that correct?
No, that is just for this particular area.
It is for this particular area. It's the aggregated, what we'll call the Greater Humboldt Bay area.
Right, yeah, because, just to be clear, we're not trying to apply a cap to the entire county.
Right, okay, no, I do understand that, I just want to make sure that that 1.66 was, which was the number it was a fraction of, and that is, in fact, okay, so that is, yeah, that's what we think the sort of aggregate share of, in that area is currently. Yes, Commissioner West?
While we're talking about the 2%, I do think it's important to note that this is 2% of the housing stock and not 2% of rental stock. So when we're talking about 1.66 and how small of a number it is, I do think that it is a little bit more impactful than the miniscule percentage would make it out to be, because we're not talking about potential rental stock.
Understood.
So, if that's the case, if you added the 2% total and 2% per area, you could figure out right now how many more permits, if everyone applied, would be available for the county, right?
Yep. I'm not convinced that, I'm a little wary of what the sort of perhaps unintended consequences might be of applying this 2% cap to each of these planning areas. There, you know, there are scenarios, it's now been made clear to me, where mathematically, even if we, even if we say that the overall 2% cap must be in effect, you know, I haven't heard, I guess specifically, I haven't heard the people of Trinidad and West Haven, let's just say, calling out and saying, we have way too many STRs around here. That's a place that is well over 2%, whether in the coastal or the inland area, for a reason, and, okay, so maybe it's not doing as much as it could do to provide worker housing and more affordable housing, but that's kind of not, that's just not what it's for. I mean, I don't want to be, I don't want to sound too crude on that point, but I mean, like, that's not where people would look to and say, this is where we need to create more affordable housing, at least that's the argument that many people have made in the comments that we've received. So, you know, I'm a little bit more comfortable with the sort of aggregate 2% than I am with applying it to each individual planning area, but I'm not, I'm quite willing to be persuaded if most people feel otherwise.
What if you had kind of a not to exceed, like, in a certain area, so that you wouldn't totally, you know, move into a whole community and turn it into, all of Trinidad into short term rentals, because they could suck up all the extra ones, so you might have a, you know, but not to exceed, if there's a limit, does that make sense?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Well, I don't know if I'm even making any sense at all, but I was thinking about this when I read it at home, that, yeah, you're saying you don't want 2% more in each area, but we all know there are certain areas people want to go visit, and they're not going to go to other areas necessarily, maybe in the future they might, but not now. So you would cap them, they could only have a certain percentage of the overall total not to exceed, so that like, one area doesn't take up everything that's left over after you get the first group in. You see what I'm saying? I don't even know what I'm saying.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what you're saying is that you're looking for the overall average, but no one area is entitled to have a disproportionate share or impact.
Of the total, so that you would have a not to exceed, and I don't know what that not to exceed would be, but maybe somebody in McKinleyville will need some income, too, and, you know, but by the time they get around to it, they can't, because everybody in Trinidad has the permits. So, I don't know if there's a percentage that you can come up with, that an area shouldn't exceed the, a certain percentage of the total, so that they don't get overcome with all short term rentals either, because I know the people that do live there permanently don't want to see all short term rentals either, but it is good for the economy, it's good for the county to have some, but that might be an impossible thing. good for the county to have some. But that might be an impossible thing to figure out. I don't know.
Yes, Commissioner Scabdal.
I do have the concern, if we go with the, I'll just say, the distributed cap by planning area, we're essentially going to put pressure on the planning areas that are currently under 2% to have the development of more short-term rentals. Right? That's where the market's going to go, because that's where it's going to be available. If we leave it with a cap on the entire Humboldt Bay area...
The aggregate cap.
The aggregate cap, then frankly, the market itself, the economy's going to decide where it's going to go.
Yeah.
And it's probably going to follow this similar pattern.
I think you really nailed what my concern is, actually. Thank you. Did you have more?
No, I'm not sure which one of those is, I'm just saying, that's the difference. We could try to manage that by, if we're going to do the distributed model, we would have to try to manage it by reducing the cap number.
By setting the cap levels differently in different areas or something?
Or, or just looking at it and trying to set a lower cap. But I don't, I'd have, you'd have to run all the models to see what that's actually going to do.
Commissioner Mulder?
So, for me, Commissioner Scabdal pointed this out well. Why I'm not in support of Alternative Four is because I really viewed that as like a big increase in STRs. And from my memory, and I could be wrong, the whole reason behind setting a cap was trying to preserve housing stock in the Greater Humboldt Bay area. And that's, the whole idea of a cap, I believe, that's where it came from. So if we stuck with the language that is there now and went with the 2% of the housing stock, the, not the alternative, but the language, not more than 2% of the housing stock may be permitted as short-term rentals in the Greater Humboldt Bay area, short-term rental cap area, which is comprised of the following community plan areas: Trinidad, West Haven community plan area, McKinleyville CPA, Field Brook-Lindale, Blue Lake, Arcata, Jacobi Creek, Freshwater, Eureka, Fortuna, Hydesville, Carlotta, and Rio de Scotia. I think I would do better at meeting our goal and intent to preserve as much of the housing stock for long-term housing rental or home purchases in the Greater Humboldt Bay area. And that would be my reason why I'm good with the current language and not interested in doing Alternative Four.
Okay. Commissioner West?
To be clear, I am completely in support of not putting more pressure on developing more short-term rentals. I think my intent would be to have an aggregate cap and a bi-planning area cap to curtail that pressure. You would retain the overall 2%, and then you would also have a 2% by community area. And now, like, now if we think that that does still put market pressure to develop short-term rentals, I would be interested in hearing that argument because that's not my intention at all, and I don't want to support something that does do that.
I think by the logic of what Commissioner Scabdal already said, if you put, even if you, unless you adjust the cap down below 2% to something like where it is now, I mean, then we're getting into some very, very complicated micromanaging of this. But I think if you were to say 2% cap overall and 2% cap in each planning area, that is going to drive the development of more short-term rentals in, you know, in McKinleyville, where it's substantially under 2% because you can't do it in Trinidad-West Haven anymore, and places that have been less impacted by it, you know, would become more impacted simply because West Haven and Trinidad can't absorb it, you know? Commissioner Scabdal?
That is in part true, but the 2% overall cap is still going to limit the total number that can be developed. So if, you know, Greater West Haven and other areas are absorbing a lot already, there's not going to be as many short-term rentals developed under Commissioner West's proposal as there would be if we just did the individual, right? If you have both the individual and in the aggregate.
Yes, right.
There's only, there's quite frankly, only the difference between 1.66 and 2, whatever number of units, that's all that would be available. And those would, to your point, be sprinkled across the areas that are less than 2%, but it's not nearly as many if we didn't have the aggregate cap.
But we also have areas where we can still do them, and they don't count to the cap, and the home share ones, they don't get included. So that's not the total when you have these other areas, right, that we already talked about that are not, the cap doesn't apply to. So there's, or you can have them in the city of Eureka or the city of Blue Lake, because they're not included in the county, right?
That is correct.
Or Arcata, because they have to have their own ordinance. So there's all kinds of possibilities of taking housing stock out of the whole county, not just, you know, the jurisdiction that we have control over.
I feel like I need to call out that we're at 9:30, and we need to decide what we can accomplish in not very much time, and I think try to wrap this up pretty soon. But yes, Commissioner Mulder, with that said...
So my motion is going to be to accept the language that's currently as written in 60.05.10.2.1.1, and not accept Alternative Four. So that way we could get on to the next section of non-transferable or not.
I agree. It's time for a motion. Do we have a second? Sure. Just that we stick with the 2% cap for the aggregate Greater Humboldt Bay area, not applying that 2% cap to the individual planning areas.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second. Ready to vote?
I would like a little discussion about the motion on the table here. So, as is, I understand that. And are, I think I sorted it out. Never mind.
Okay, then let's have a voice vote. All those in favor, okay, further discussion?
So this doesn't, as written, does it capture the fact that you're going to allow more than 2%? Well, we know, going into, we're not going to have more than 2% of the existing ones, right? They're not going to push us over the...
The numbers we have right now show that there are not 2% of the total. It's 1.66.
I just didn't want it to conflict with what's going to happen initially, and we're going to be under the 2% with the existing ones. Okay, I get it. I think it's getting late and my brain's fried.
Mine is too, honestly. It is...
When you explain it, it starts to make, when I explain things, it makes a lot more sense to me.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion to keep the existing language, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we had four in favor and two opposed, correct? Okay.
Can I just make a quick comment? I'm sorry.
Please.
It took me a couple of seconds, so I don't want this to come back next time. California Government Code, Section 65852.2E5, basically says ADUs that are ministerially permitted cannot be rented less than 30 days, which is how we crafted our ordinance. So I don't know if we need to go back to that next time and debate how ADUs are excluded.
Got it. You're saying it's pretty clear, cut and dry, under state law. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Appreciate that. That's, that's an option, but yeah. Okay, I mean, I want to balance all of our wish to get through this with the fact that it is now getting past 9:30. Do we want to take on maybe at least, see if we can get through a couple more alternatives quickly? What's your recommendation, Director?
Well, I, we have a new security guard out there that isn't our normal security guard.
Ah, okay, and we really are supposed to be done.
I just don't have the relationship there to go out and say, "Hey."
Okay, I will, if it's not an option, it's not an option. I do have a question, though. When we continue, when we continue this, when do we continue it to, and do we, do we have to allow more public comment? We do.
So we're planning on bringing new information back, and so you will need to accept public comment on that.
Got it, because there's new information or new revisions that will be made. Okay, yes.
Would we want to work throughout, through the rest of the ordinance before that point?
So I'm going to say right now, unless we're agreeing to hammer this out and be 100% done, I'm heading out that door in two minutes.
So could I offer this?
Please.
Would recommend that you continue it to November 2nd to continue going through the ordinance without any new information being presented. And then we will bring back revisions on November 16th.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense. So does somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
I move that we continue this to the November 2nd without, let's get through finishing the ordinance.
Yes, great.
Before we bring revisions to the world.
I think maybe that's what you were suggesting before. That's helpful all around. Okay.
Second.
Sorry, who made the motion? Commissioner Landry. Yes, Commissioner Landry and Commissioner West made the second. This is...
Could you restate the motion, please?
Of course, I was going to. It was simply the matter of how do we continue it, when to continue it, and Director Ford suggested that if we continue to November 2nd, only our going through the existing ordinance that we didn't get through without bringing back any further revisions or new information, we can do that part without further public comment. And then, well, at that time, we'll have to continue it to another meeting to sort of settle it, as it were. Okay? So that, so there was a motion to that effect made by Landry, seconded by West. Any, Commissioner Mulder, yes?
Point of clarification, if you missed all of this hearing to participate in the comments that pick up on the 2nd, you would need to watch all this hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, any further discussion?
One more point of clarification. If folks want to comment again, it would be at the meeting on the 16th.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for calling that out. Yes. Okay, with all that said, I think we're ready to vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. This public hearing will be continued to the November 2nd meeting. If there's nothing urgent and burning that needs to be said under Planning, Planner Report, then we will go ahead and adjourn. And thank you all, staff and audience who was here until a minute ago, for staying with us this whole time. Thank you.